Special meeting for North Branford Planning and Zoning Commission for Thursday, February 19th to order. In attendance are regular members, Sienna, Leska Fitz-Gunn, and Dulac.
Our first order of business will be to review the meeting minutes from February 5th. In attendance at that meeting was myself, Fran, Charlie, and Ron. Did you have a chance to review the minutes?
Yeah.
You do.
I make a motion. We accept the minutes of February 5th.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Oh, second.
All approved.
Right.
Yep. The first order of business tonight is a public hearing. It's PZ Application 2014-15-12. Applicant Christopher Crannick. Charlie, would you like to read the legal notice, please?
The following legal notice appeared in the sound on Thursday, February 5th, 2015, and Thursday, February 12th, 2015. Legal Notice: North Branford Planning and Zoning Commission. Notice is hereby given that the North Branford Planning and Zoning Commission will hold a public hearing at 7:00 PM on Thursday, February 19th, 2015, at the North Branford Intermediate School, 654 Foxen Road, North Branford, Connecticut, to consider the following. Application 2014-15-12. Proposed changes to the zoning regulations regarding bulk storage of liquefied national gas, natural gas, LNG, including propane, and regulation changes regarding public notice for text amendments. Applicant Christopher Crannick. Crannick, I'm sorry, Chris. At this hearing, all interested parties persons may appear and be heard, and written communications will be received. Copies of the above proposals are on file for public inspection in the Town Hall Planning Department. Dated January 26, 2015, North Branford, Connecticut, Harry Dulac, Chairman.
Thank you, Charlie. For the public hearing, just, I'm not sure how many people have been involved with the public hearing. What we'll do, how we'll start off is the applicant will be able to come up and make his presentation on his application. There might be some questions and answers between the commission and the applicant. After we get through that, then we will have some reviews and comments from the staff. And again, then at that time, we will open it up for any public comments, and we're going to go to nine o'clock on that one. And we'll stop discussion at nine o'clock, continue into the next meeting as well. So at this time, Chris.
Make sure I've got the, all right, I have to be right close to the mic. I'm learning. Good evening. My name is Keith Ainsworth. I'm an attorney who represents, or I have the privilege of representing, Chris Crannick. And Chris actually, in turn, represents, I think, a number of the folks who were present. I'll let them speak for that. And he has submitted to you before for your consideration an application, which I understand that it's a little bit unusual, but not that unusual, given the circumstances that we're in. And I want to thank you in advance for taking the time to go through this. I guess what I've, you've heard enough from me. I've introduced it now, I guess, twice in little bits, but, and you raised some questions last time, and I wanted to be able to answer those. I don't want you to hear, you know, too much from the attorneys, because I think you need to hear from the public as well. So I'm going to try to be as brief as I can. I want you to be comfortable with understanding what the purpose of this, what this text amendment proposal does and does not do. You raised some questions last time, and I want to answer those first, because obviously those are questions that probably first on your mind. What is, I think you asked about, does this affect any of the businesses in town? I think perhaps you may have raised Agway in particular. We looked into that, and I believe Agway's tank is 1,000 gallons, which would be below the regulatory limit that's being triggered under these regs. So we shouldn't be impacting that particular.
They have one at 1,000?
1,000 gallons.
Yeah, one at 1,000. One tank.
Yes. I'm sorry, I didn't. And then as far as the, you asked a question about, I think, the residential condos, and I think there's an answer to that. Carrie Duke's raised a question about defining what the storage of liquid natural gas is. And I think if you defined it in this fashion, fairly simply, that it's the storage for retail and wholesale distribution, it covers what we're trying to get at, and I'll explain that. Because if it's for retail and wholesale distribution, that's where you've got the tanks that are being, that are storing the gas, and vehicles are coming in to attach to them, fill up, leave, and distribute it to homes, businesses, or wherever they're bringing it. What we're trying not to do is regulate, let's say, the person who's got a tank for their home, because the size of the tanks for a home are typically less than 500 gallons. I mean, 500 gallons is actually on the high side. Typically, they're 100, 150. But we, so by exempting, or by focusing on distribution facilities, you're capturing the real risk. The risks that these facilities propose, the large bulk storage for distribution, is where you have vehicles coming in and out. You've got more of a risk of collision, you've got more of a risk of disconnection, you've got connections and disconnections, you've got people, third-party drivers, third-party vehicles. So you've got more risk introduced. If you've got a, let's say, a plant, an industrial plant, that's using the gas on the premises as part of their industrial process, or they're using it for heating, that's a hard connection directly to the plant. And that's regulated through OSHA, it's regulated through the fire code, and it's a much more stable system. You're not tinkering with it, nobody's driving around it, usually they're separated from the parking lot. And so we'd be avoiding those kinds of situations. What we're looking at is those situations that pose the kind of risk that has concerned the community. So if you define it simply as the storage for retail and wholesale distribution, I think you'd get around the problem of what happens when you've got the condo with the smaller tanks. But even then, those tanks are going to be dispersed between various buildings, and you're going to have natural blast protection from the different buildings. And so what we're trying to get at is not the risk from a smaller tank. There's a risk in any tank, even your gas tank on your grill has a risk, but we're not trying to eliminate everything, just the ones that people find disconcerting. So you also asked, did this come, where did this come from? We, I will be presenting to you Brian Elias, who has a PhD in fire protection engineering, to testify what the basis for it is. But basically, the basis for this is looking at what would happen, in the worst-case scenario, if the storage facility ignited, and what was that, what's the reasonable blast radius? And that's calculated out to about 800 feet, with a safety factor of two is 1,600 feet. And the reg here addresses a 1,500-foot separation. So we're talking about a very reasonable, because typical engineering science would put in a safety factor of two to five. So we've only chosen the safety factor of two.
That's based on 5,000 gallons?
That's actually based on...
Your 800 feet?
No, the, well, Brian Elias will talk about what it's based on, but it's based on, let's say, the facility that may have up to 30,000 gallons. It, obviously, that radius will change depending on the size. So what does the reg do? It triggers it at a minimum of 1,500 gallons. That means your typical distribution for filling up gas grills is about 1,000 gallon tanks. Sometimes they're 1,500, but unusually so. It's usually 1,000. So we're not getting at those kinds of facilities, because those pose a lesser risk. But it triggers it at over 1,500, so it would be 1,501 gallons. And that requires a 1,500-foot separation. And then at 2,500 gallons, you have to put in blast protection, which is an earth and berm. Typically, that can be done by burying it, or by putting in a berm that's above it, if it's an above-ground tank. And we've calculated that 125 percent, so, of the length and height. And so if you've got a 30,000 gallon tank, for instance, that would be a 15-foot tank, it would be 18-foot-high berm. If it's 35 feet long, it's a 44-foot-length berm. So it's a little bit larger, so that if there's a blast, it catches it and drives it up into the air. Also important to note is that at 2,500 gallons, you have to go for a special permit. So we're not catching the 1,000 gallon tank, or the 1,500 gallon tank for a special permit. It's at the 2,500 gallon level that you actually have to now justify, are you compatible with your surrounding neighborhood?
So from 2,500 gallons to 5,000 gallons, because it's maximum on a lot, that would require a special use permit?
Correct. And if someone went to go beyond 5,000, they could go for a variance, and then they'd have to meet the variance standard, or go for text amendment. And again, they'd have to justify that they're compatible. So it doesn't, it doesn't preclude it from ever happening, but it puts the control back in the town's hands. And that's, the reason that this started was, the text amendment that occurred, basically inadvertently deregulated the amount of gas that could be stored, and basically took away any controls that might be put in by a special permit process. You guys don't get to consider all the things that you normally get to consider. So that's what the motivation for this is. And it also only affects, at 5,000 gallons, it only affects the I-2 zone that allows for gas storage. I hope that was short enough. But that's, that's the proposal. And the proposal we have before you, the first part of the material meets your request, that it state the original language, and then the second half of the request is in bold, that's the proposed language.
Can I just ask a question?
Absolutely.
The 1,500 gallon, that's per tank, or is that per parcel? So if there's a parcel that has two 1,000-gallon tanks, would that trigger the 2,500 threshold?
Well, it wouldn't, it wouldn't trigger the, 2,000 gallon tanks would be at 2,000...
Oh, well, right.
So it wouldn't trigger the 2,500, but it would trigger the 1,500 foot, because if you look at number two on it, it says the storage of bulk LNG over 1,500 gallons. It doesn't say in a single tank. It's, so it's on a single parcel.
And that, you're looking to apply to the entire town? Because there are parcels that exist in towns, such as farms, that have several 1,000-gallon tanks on one parcel. So that's where I'm just trying to...
And in the future, they would be required to meet the separation. Of course, a farm is likely to have the 1,500-foot separation. Not guaranteed, but, but if you had that existing, you'd be grandfathered it. If you tried to add a new tank, you know, another tank, to make it a third or fourth tank, then perhaps you'd have to meet, you'd have to still meet the 1,500-foot separation. But you still don't have to go for the special permit, because you haven't triggered that. Well, actually, until you fit the 2,500 gallons.
Right, so if you add a third 1,000-gallon tank...
Then you would, then you would hit the special permit level. But they should be able to justify, they should more easily be able to justify the compatibility with the surrounding uses, depending on where they place those tanks. If they're right up against the border, and there's a house on the other side, then you may want to have something to say about them moving the tank to another location.
And would the addition of the definition that you just spoke of, about retail wholesale, would that make them exempt, because it's maybe used for use by the farm?
You've, actually, you're absolutely correct. And that's why I did that, was so that users who are consuming the gas on the premises and not distributing it, they would not be covered by that. So actually, in your, in your example, the farm actually would not be, unless they were distributing to other entities, which would be highly unusual. So the idea was to get at the more risky operations where you've got vehicles moving in and out, as opposed to someone who's got a hard, a hard-wired connection to either a heating system or an industrial process.
I guess I have a question also.
Yes, sir.
Something I thought you were saying about, I have no idea what the capacity distribution is. Let's assume it's like 1,000 gallons.
Ryan, use the mic.
Actually, nine...
Talking to the mic.
Oh, I'm sorry. Typical propane truck that comes to your house is like 900 gallons?
900 gallons?
Yes. The ones that come in to deliver to the, to a storage facility are going to be 15 to 30. They're going to be large.
1,000, I mean, a gas delivery truck doesn't equate to an oil-delivery truck.
Correct. They're, they're not the same. But a, a ga, a propane delivery truck that goes to your house and fills up your tank is about a 900-gallon vehicle. The ones that come to fill up the bulk propane facility are like a tanker truck, or looks like a gas truck. Those are much larger. They wouldn't be covered by this, because, one, they're regulated under the, under DOT regs, and number two, they're not storage. They're, they're a vehicle. You're, you're moving.
How big, did you say Agway's tank was?
Oh, it's a 1,000-gallon tank. My clients, when I looked at, I didn't look, but I believe it was a 1,000-gallon tank. And that's, that's typical for someone who's filling up the gas grill tanks that you're familiar with.
Can you also, you mentioned earlier about disconnecting, you know, so like, for, if it was a, a tank that was for retail and wholesale distribution, you said there, you know, one of your concerns was disconnect, so, safety. But can you elaborate what, do you know what the actual safety features are on those disconnects, on those, you know, the tanks that are in place?
I can't. Typically, on a, on a distribution facility, as opposed to like the fill-up ones for your gas grill, there, it's basically a couple of shut-off valves. It's a very simple, simplified version. But on a distribution facility, they have various code-related, or quote, code-required shut-offs. They have hoses that break and seal, so if the truck drives off, or with it attached, it will automatically seal. They have, you know, self-closing valves. They have a number of safety features, like, there's probably a dozen that go, that I could describe. And actually, I'm not an expert in that, I'd probably defer to Mr., for Mr. Elias on that. But they have those, but despite having those, there have been accidents. They're not foolproof. Sometimes the valves stick. Sometimes someone misuses it. Sometimes someone makes a mistake. The codes that are in place are there to address some of the common things that can happen, but they can't address everything, and they can't address when somebody does something really stupid, like drives a truck into it, or goes and smokes, or is drunk and happens to be driving a vehicle, or on drugs, or they have medications, or they have an episode. I mean, there's various things that have happened. It's not usual, doesn't happen every month, but when it happens, it can, it can cause a fairly catastrophic event, when you've got a very large amount of gas. And the reason why we picked, the elements we picked, is because beyond these levels, they have to come to you and ask for a special permission to do so. You know, if you're going to 30, 60,000 gallon storage, some of the, I've been involved with some of the other ones on the shoreline, where it was half a million, you know, you're talking about amounts that need to be, have more regulation than just the NFPA. The NFPA deals with the technical connections and the physical standards for installing them, but it doesn't deal with the catastrophic events, because they can't. And that's up to the local community. And other communities have dealt with it.
So there is a lot of safety factors in place, and other than somebody doing something stupid, lighting a cigarette, or being drunk, I'm not sure what the issues are. I, I know that they discussed when, if, if something happened on that hose that's connecting from the truck to the storage tank, if there was a fire on that hose, that there is a water relief that automatically goes off, that's what we understood anyhow.
Well, they, there are various fire suppression installations that go along with these facilities. And they have choices. They have water inundation, which takes a large volumes of water to cool off a tank, so that if there's a fire that causes the tank to heat up, and potentially an explosion hazard, you can cool it off. Or if there's a fire, you can douse it. There's also other ways of, they have, like I said, the proposed, it's a breakaway, that when the hose breaks off, it seals automatically. But these things aren't foolproof. Let's say you have a vehicle that just, it fails, the brakes are bad, the, the driver makes a mistake and, and hits the valve, or hits the tank. These things can happen. They're not, as I said, they're not usual, but when they happen, they cause problems. And the fire suppression isn't just enough. I mean, if something goes wrong, you want to have that separation distance. And, you know, and as a result, and, or as a, as an example, when these things leak in Guilford not too many years ago, there was a truck that overturned, they had to evacuate about a half mile to three-quarters of a mile radius, and they, they shut down 95 for about six or eight hours. I mean, it's that, and that's just the delivery truck, it was about 900 gallons. It's a serious risk. And so what we're doing here is, we're producing standards that protect the community in the event of those unusual events. This is not all that burdensome. I mean, and that's, I think, the real point, is that this is not meant to destroy the industry, but it's, it's meant to say, look, if you're going to do this, and you're going to bring in large amounts of explosive material, you're going to have to do something that contains it.
I guess I have a question going back to the 5,000 gallon.
Sure.
In my delivery truck. Is this thing working? Can you hear me?
Yeah, yeah, you're closer, Ron.
Pull, pull it closer. Is it okay now?
Yes.
Okay. You used the example of a delivery truck flipping over, and that's 900 gallons.
Uh, for the ones leaving, the ones who fill the facility...
Right, the delivery truck that would come...
I guess, you know, you chose 5,000 gallons, and a delivery truck is only 900 gallons.
Why not bring this down to a realistic 1,000 gallons?
Well, because what we're trying to address is, and first of all, we can't address the vehicles. The vehicles are regulated by DOT.
Right, I, I understand that. What you're trying to do is address a problem. And so am I. If, you know, is three enough, or is six too many? You're, I think you're looking at it specifically with an agenda, and I'm trying to look at it all encompassing. If we're, if we're going to address this, let's address it.
I agree, I agree, and I hear you.
So I guess, well, you know, the, you're absolutely right, the average, because I just got, so I have roll gas at my house, and the average tank is 250 to 350 to heat a house, according to the brochure that you sent in my bill. So your numbers were right on. So that, I mean, the 1,000-gallon tank is beyond the normal heating of a home.
Correct, and what...
So I mean, you, you jump from the heating of a home to 5,000 gallons. What about these 1,000 gallons? You know, some of them are alongside the road, there's one on Middletown Avenue I drive by every day, it looks like the, one of those bombs from Afghanistan, but, yeah, I guess I'm going back questioning, why 5,000, not 1,000?
Well, the, the idea here is that we're trying to get at the, the big risks that could cause serious damage to the community. You know, you could go down to the level of the gas grill tank as well, at 20 gallons, but that gets to the point of too much intrusion, and I guess it's a sliding scale. We can't address the delivery truck, because that's DOT regulated, it's federally exempt from local regulation. This is talking about, we're looking at the risk of a stationary facility that's, that's got bulk capacity. The 1,000-gallon tanks are risks that many communities take, they're not that unusual. We, I guess we accept those risks that come with those, they're, they're not without risk, but we accept those risks. But at some point, you pick a number that's larger, that contains a significant enough risk, that you want to actually put special controls on it, where the person, where the applicant has to come and say, we want to apply to you and prove to you that we're compatible with the, with the surrounding uses. At 1,000 gallons, sure, are there potential impacts? Yes. But do we want to go down to that level of regulation? No. I would say, I would say no, because you're getting to the point where, you're, you're getting to the risks that are lower and small enough that they, I think, the community accepts them, because traditionally they have. Nobody reacted until someone wanted to put a 30,000-gallon tank in the community. So we didn't start there, we wanted to start at a level that, where it was meaningful. That's, that's what started the discussion, was 30,000. But what we chose was the 5,000, because if a 5,000-gallon tank explodes, you've got a, you've got a significant event. But will I tell you, can I, can I tell you that there's an absolute line where, you know, one's acceptable, one's not? No, that's a judgment call. And that's what, that's what you're here for, is you make the judgment call.
Do we know, do we know how many 5,000-gallon tanks are in this town, and would that make them non-conforming?
We're, we're unaware of any 5,000-gallon tanks.
How about 2,500, or...
Let me help you out a little bit here.
Perhaps you...
In the center of Norfolk, there are 1,000-gallon tanks hooked up in series, and there's four 1,000-gallon tanks. So is that 4,000, or is that 1,000, or...
Well, again, that's what we were talking about, the farm situation, where it would, it's not for distribution, so that wouldn't be affected.
Ryan, where's that location?
Behind the strip mall in Norfolk Center, there's a pizza place there. You go around the back, there's four of them. And they're four together, and there's one off, maybe 100 feet from it. And then there's smaller ones also along the building.
I'm guessing...
Giovanni's?
Giovanni's. They run pizza ovens.
Right, so it wouldn't be for distribution.
And, but that's, it's not for distribution, that's, that's for consumption on the premises. Again, we didn't want to get at manufacturers, because that's a different question. Again, because they're hardwired, they don't have the activity level. Those are behind the building, there's no traffic there.
And, you know, I also have a question about, you know, you're addressing, you know, from residential. Well, if I'm at a restaurant, and I'm having dinner, you know, I want the same rules applying across the board. So I mean, it, it looks like a cherry picking.
Well, and I think we, this question came up early in the last session, and I think my answer to that was, we do make distinctions between, between residential and commercial uses and industrial uses all the time. But in this case, as I said, the, the distinction is, a distribution facility has activity that makes it riskier than a stationary source that's hardwired into the, essentially hardened, plumbed into the building, where you don't have traffic going around them, you don't have people connecting and disconnecting, and you don't have that daily constant activity, which, which ups that risk. The ones that are, that are just installed and stationary and quiet in the back of the building, those pose, they do pose a risk. Anything poses a risk. Someone wants to take a pot shot at it with a gun, but, you know, you, what we're trying to get at is the reasonable risk, is the things that might be conceivable. And, and these bulk storage facilities are conceivable risks, there have been accidents at those. You don't really hear about, you know, the 1,000-gallon tank getting hit.
Keith, I think, Ron, I think what you were asking is, in bullet point number two, it's 1,500 feet away from any residential property. And I think what Ron was alluding to, was that, why just residential? Why not, you know, 1,500 feet from any particular business, or any other occupied place, such as, Ron was mentioning, a restaurant, an, even industrial zone, you might have an operation with maybe 50 people in there, which, if, if it's that close, the 50 people are, you know, I mean, the residential's a little more spread out compared to a business, might they have 25 or 50 people working there. So the risk is, to them, is equally as somebody in a residential area.
And quite well taken, that one could add in residential and commercial. And point well taken, that one could add in residential and commercial. I think industrial, I think we make an exception for those, that industrial facilities take certain risks.
Well, they don't take risks, the people that are already there. When somebody comes in, the risk is being planted there, so, I mean, you know.
You could, I mean, you could take out, you could take out from all residential districts and you could just put from abutting properties. Shelby set back 1,500 feet from, from abutting properties.
Yeah, I'm just trying to get a thought where, you know, where you're coming up, you know, what you were, your thoughts, you know, what you were thinking when you developed this?
Typically, when you use the word resident, residential property, it's because people are living there and they're constantly occupying it. Whereas businesses are open for a certain limited period of time and, and commercial units generally have low occupancy and temporary occupancy.
But I would think production, you know, if you've got 50 guys working in a factory in tight, within a factory, there's more people per square foot than in a home, than in a residential. So these guys are concentrated and if that tank, if a tank goes, then, you know, they're more likely to get hurt than a residential home. Yet you're addressing the residential as opposed to the commercial and that's where I'm taking exception.
Well, your point is well taken and there's an, there's an equal way to do, to address that, which is you could take out the reference to residential and just have a 1,500 foot set back from occupied properties.
Or just from a property line?
Or from, or from property lines. I mean, but I think you get into a fair, a fairly strict condition there. But yes, you could protect, you could protect someone in the, in the restaurant or in the adjacent dance studio from the same risk.
But 1,500 feet, that would decimate any economic development in town. 1,500 feet. You know, think of your lot size, people. If, you know, I'm thinking of a, any industrial park, like, are the lots even that big?
To put a tank on the other side of it, the other end of it?
Well, not for distribution. They can put a tank in there for, for use. If they're using it themselves, they could, they would be able to put a tank in there. They just wouldn't be able to do it for retail and wholesale distribution. So if you opened up a business and you wanted to put a 1,000 gallon tank or four 1,000 gallon tanks for use on that property, then that would be acceptable.
And if it's, if it's just for consumption on the property, yes.
Exactly. So it would be only if it's, it'd be only if it's, the 1,500 feet would only apply if it was for distribution.
I have two questions. One is, are you expecting if we pass this, it to be affecting our previous site plan that's waiting to come in?
We'll address the 800 pound gorilla in the room. There is an application by a current applicant. Everybody's aware of that. There, there is case law that says that an existing, an existing application that has been, that is applied under existing regulations, those are the regulations that apply and not the new regulations. There is also additional case law, Supreme Court case law in the state of Connecticut that says that a community may regulate a pre-existing grandfathered use for reasonable health, safety and welfare reasons. But you can't have it be a pretext. In other words, you have to have it reasonably related on a scientific basis or an engineering basis to, to, to regulate a pre-existing grandfathered use. In other words, grandfathered use does not enjoy absolute protection from any future regulation forever. That's, that's not the case in Connecticut. However, the town can't just go and place new regulations on them that break, that shatter their expectations in a way that isn't based in true public health and safety. So it's possible that it could apply or it's possible that they could argue that it shouldn't apply to them, but they, they will be able to make that argument.
And Fran, what we'll do is if, if, if a reg, a regulation like this is accepted and there's the other, sorry.
Application.
If this, if this does pass, what we would do and there's, with the other application, we would get, we would probably, we would get legal, a legal brief on it to see which direction the town would go in that case. Because like, like Keith mentioned, that there's case studies both ways, so we would have to get guidance from our town attorney.
One more question, and I don't know if you're knowledgeable to answer. A berm, let's just say that they are allowed to do it. The court says, yes, we can't, you know, override even if we pass this.
Right.
Would a cinder block berm? I'm not quite sure what you mean by berm. I mean, I know what, you're talking about height and length and everything, but of what material?
We chose an earthen berm, which is earth, soil. Soil based because one is, is easily available materials. They are commonly used for this purpose. It also allows them to bury the tank, which is a, a common practice. And it's very, it's very easily, it's feasible. It's not the only way. If someone came in and said, we want to do a blast wall made of concrete cinder block like you suggested, or something else, some other material, even steel, I don't know. They could come in and say, we want a variance from this regulation to use something else. And then you could say, oh, that's a reasonable material you're using. You've given us an engineering diagram that says this works. Earthen berms are a tried and tested, you know, material and, and, I'm losing the word here, but it's a, it's a typical solution to that problem. And actually, we have a letter from an engineer who talked about using earthen berms for this purpose and we will send it to the commission.
You mentioned burying the tank?
Yes.
So?
That's, that's a commonly done thing. A lot of tanks on the shoreline where there's wave action, they actually want them to be buried so they don't get carried away and smack into somebody. But it's also used as blast protection. Because if you bury it in the ground, there's less ignition possibility, there's less collision possibility. And also, when, if there is an ignition, it, it has to go through the soil. I mean, it just hits the soil and is contained, it goes up.
So for, so for all the, for all the different scenarios, 1,000, 2,500, those would all be buried tanks?
They could be. They don't have to be.
Okay, so you're not proposing that though?
Well, no, if, if, if you look at the earthen berm reference in here.
Right.
One could actually bury it with the 125% berm. In other words, the tank's under, underground, either by 25% or it's right at the surface and you put a little, you know, a small berm that's only a couple of feet.
Right, do bury it. So if you do bury it, what's exposed? Just the distribution part of it? So the tank is completely buried and then just whatever mechanism?
There's a couple of ways it's done, to be honest with you. Sometimes the top foot of the tank, depending on the size of the tank, sometimes the top part of it, the filled portion, of course, is open and it sometimes has an access panel. And then if it's got a distribution element to it, that's piped to a, a stanchion where it distributes out just like it were above ground. It's the same, same connection point. So it's just a matter of plumbing at that point. An applicant might choose not to bury it because that poses a little more maintenance activity. In other words, you have to dig up the tank if you want to inspect the outside, that kind of thing. They have electronic maintenance systems they can put in to avoid having to do that, but if they have to do work on the tank, they have to dig it up. So someone may choose to do an above ground to avoid that.
So let me ask you a question. If, based on your option, you know, the different scenarios, the 1,000, the 20, the 1,000, 2,500, if that's above ground, let's assume that's what you're, for the most part.
Typically, yes.
If somebody was going to bury it, would there be, could they go, I mean, I understand they'd go larger for anything over 2,500, but, you know, what's your thoughts on if you're burying it, what kind of, what kind of volume, what size tanks would be acceptable if they're, if they're completely burying it? Because obviously it's, it's safer in the ground. Like you said, there's, there's different maintenance parts of it, but that's not the, not our concern, it's the safety. So if you were to bury it, do you have any data or anything to say, you know, a 10,000 gallon tank in the ground is equal to a 1,500 tank above ground? Or is there any kind of comparison that you can make?
Well, understand how this works. The way, the way it's designed is that the earthen berm concept is just in, you have to have an earthen berm around it.
Right.
If you bury it, that effectively is an earthen berm.
Right.
So if you have, if you meet the requirements for the earthen berm, then you've done what you need to do under the reg. It still has a 5,000 gallon limit and you could then apply to the commission for, again, an exception to the rules, a variance, to say, I want to put in a 60,000 or 150,000 gallon facility and I want to put it underground. And then they're going to have to prove to you that if this thing goes, that the soil around it is going to be submission to, to.
I was wondering if you had any data on that?
I don't, because actually typically they don't, they, they do them above ground because of the desire to keep it simple.
Yeah, but again, I mean, simple is somebody who wants to put something in, that's, simple or complex is up to them.
Correct.
What we're doing is we're looking for, you know, the parameters, you know, you know, safety. So when somebody does come in, you know, we, we have the information, actually now, since it's down the road, we can, you know, work with that.
And, and I think the simple answer to that is, I tried to keep the regulation as straightforward and simple as possible so that it was easily applicable and easily understood by an applicant, so they know what they're getting into. If they want to do something more than this, they can come and make a special.
Right.
Application and then they, they have the burden of coming to you with the engineer and saying, this particular configuration that we've come up with is safe. And they convince you. If you try to do it ahead of time in the regs, you're going to have IRS tax code kind of thing. You're going to have all the different possible scenarios. And you can't really do that because every site's different. You're going to have some sites that have different topography. You have some sites that have ledge, some sites that just have different circumstances. So.
Again, it's up to somebody in the future, if they're going to build on ledge, it's up to them.
Right. So the point is, if someone wants to do something bigger than the 5,000 gallon, they have to come in here and they have to tell you why it's okay. As opposed to them having the current regs where they can say, we're allowed to do this, you can't stop us. And that's a bad scenario because they don't even have to justify it to you. They only have to say, we meet the NFPA, which only deals with the installation and the piping and all the safety valves and all that, but it doesn't talk about what happens in a catastrophic instance. And frankly, if you've got an I-2 zone, you're, you're good to go. And if someone re-zoned a property to I-2 one year and then five years later to want to put in an 80,000 gallon facility, it's there. And now all of a sudden you've got a blast radius of, you know, three quarters of a mile. You know, and you don't have anything to say about it. So with these regs, at least it gives, it puts the control back into the town and it gives you the discretion. That's, that's what we were trying to accomplish.
Thank you. Yeah, I, I have a couple of questions also, I guess. You know, I, it's, it's too simple. That being the case, I, you know, every, every sentence I read, you know, questions just popping into my mind, like, you know, I'll put increments on this and, you know, there's no, there's no statistics or scientific research on the table, so, you know, you're an attorney and I'm an old, you know.
You're a commissioner, you're, you're in Tyler.
Yeah, but anyway, I guess the berms. And I'm, you know, I'm going back to my Vietnam days in that a confined explosion, you blow those berms out and you've had a worse scenario than just letting it blow skyward. So I, you know, I don't know that. And how, if, a earthen berm is that, you know, of what capacity? You know, a half a mile wide and, you know, you know, three miles high?
Well, we actually have, and Brian, you have a letter? I've got our expert here, who I should probably introduce at this point. Because we've had an engineer look at the earthen berm and, and write a letter which describes. But basically, the way the earthen berm would typically be designed is it would have a sloping inside, so it would direct the blast up and out. It's totally open on the top, it's not enclosed.
Yes.
And it's not even sunken down far enough where you're continuing. It's only 125%, which, which as I was showing you, is only a couple of feet higher than the tank. So you've got a, but what it's going to do is going to prevent that blast from going sideways, which is, which is where the damage comes. If it goes up, you've ameliorated it considerably. And that is what Brian Elias can talk to you about, because he's the, he's the blast guy.
Shooting projectiles.
Rocks.
Rocks.
Yes. Well, if the, if earthen berm is constructed properly, it's not going to be made of, of cobbles and gravel. It's going to be made of earth, which is dirt, which absorbs, you know.
White earth has rocks in it.
Well, typically a berm for blast.
Everyone in New York knows they have rocks in their backyard.
No, no, it would be screed soil, but anyway. I'm going to, I'm going to introduce the guy who, who knows about this stuff, because I, I'm knowledgeable, but I'm not the expert. So let me introduce Brian Elias, who.
Let's go out of turn because.
Yeah, I don't want to interrupt your, your presentation and I apologize for that.
No, no, actually, I think I've, I've said as much as I probably can say unless you have questions about how it functions, because that's what attorneys do. But as far as the technical part of it, this is the gentleman you want to hear from. And if, and I'm happy to answer all the questions, I'm not trying to dodge you.
Hello, good evening. My name is Brian Elias. I am a fire protection engineer. I have to set the record a little straight. I was introduced as having a PhD. I'm close, but not at the end of the tunnel. I have a master's and about six months left or so to build. So my function is I was brought in to look at this and to try and provide the commission and the community with some hard data facts for what an industry-accepted hazard analysis would show for this type of an installation. And certainly, as you all know, safety is not an on or off switch. You know, it's not a, yes, it's safe, no, it's not. It's a sliding scale. And I think, I hope, my input can help the commission and the community decide where you're comfortable being at on that scale. So I took a look at the, at a generic site that houses something on the order of 30,000 gallon propane tanks. And I came up with a few hazard scenarios. And I'm happy to go through those with you or I'm happy to answer your questions that directly, you know, came out of the, the previous. Which would you like? Yep, you want to hear the hazard scenarios that I went through? Absolutely.
Yeah, I'll start.
So what I took a look at was two scenarios that I would consider to be the highest risk in this type of an installation that consists of tanks on the order of 30,000 gallons. The first scenario involves a, a pressure-related explosion of the tank. Doesn't have anything to do with the fact that the tank contents are flammable. It has everything to do with the fact that the tank is pressurized. The way this scenario plays out is you have a source of heat somewhere near the tank, underneath the tank. So one scenario would be maybe a filling truck catches fire, a typical vehicle fire. Nothing special to the fact that it's propane, just a vehicle fire. That vehicle fire is impinging on the tank, so flames are heating that tank. The tank is, has some liquid in it, has some vapor in it. The liquid initially starts absorbing that heat and the liquid begins to boil. That boiling increases the pressure in the vapor space above the liquid in this big 30,000 gallon tank. That vapor space starts heating up and eventually what happens is we exceed the maximum engineering pressure of the tank and the tank explodes. It's a pressure-based explosion. The technical term for that is a levee, a boiling liquid expanding vapor explosion.
Excuse me?
Yep.
Previously, someone spoke on that subject and there's something called a pressure relief valve.
Absolutely.
So the tank, yes, it does pressurize, but it vents.
Correct. So all tanks do have pressure relief valves on them. All LPG-based tanks have pressure release valves on them. Over a few scenarios. Number one is they are only designed for a certain level of heat impingement. It is certainly possible to exceed that level of heat impingement that they were designed for. So you're exceeding the design basis. If the design basis was, you know, a Ford Focus fire and you have a, an LP tank, delivery truck fire, you're going to exceed the design basis of that relief valve. So yes, you will have some venting. So these are the typical scenarios that you can go on YouTube and watch the videos of the train rail cars, right? And you hear that hissing sound and you see the jet flame right before the explosion. That's the venting valve doing its job, but the venting valve is being, is, is not been designed to the level where the heat is, not been designed to the level that the current scenario is providing heat for. So you're right that they do have venting valves, but they're not. So you're right that they do have venting valves, but they're not... They don't always prevent those type of blevvy explosions. So that, I think, answers your question.
But there would have to be a fire right near the tank for that to happen?
For this scenario, the tank would have to be heated by some external source. So a vehicle fire or some other, you know, basis of heat going onto the tank. Correct.
So you're saying there's a design flaw in the tanks?
Well, I'm not saying there's a design flaw in the tanks. I'm stating that, as with safety, there has to be some point where you've designed the tank for, right? So we need to design the tank for a certain design fire. So we look at the scenario and say, "Okay, we believe that this fire load exists next to the tank. We're going to design it for this many kilowatts of heat input." If, in fact, something happens where you have a much larger fire impinging on the tank than what it was designed for, then certainly, those design safety limits can be exceeded, and you can experience this type of a blevvy explosion.
Is a vent a barrier?
The vent is designed for the application for the tank. Correct. There are formulas used to design the venting size and how much gas and/or gas and liquid can be vented over a period of time. But if your heat input exceeds the amount that your vent can release, then you have a buildup of pressure and the potential for that blevvy type explosion.
So this particular scenario you're going through, where let's just say it was a delivery truck, or... So it catches fire. Now, you're basically saying that when they designed the tank, they'd have taken consideration that a truck was going to be pulling it to do distribution? Or what is the temperature limits of a tank of, let's say, 30,000, as you mentioned?
Sure. It's more... It's not really a temperature limit. It's how much heat input is coming into the tank, the actual heat energy being transferred into that tank. And the design fire for that can be... Can vary depending on the application. In a filling station, I don't believe it would approach the level of a full-on vehicle fire at the base of the tank. I think that would probably exceed the level of the vent design. I would have to go through and do the calculations, but my feeling is that would exceed the capabilities of a safety vent.
Could you do that for the next meeting? Provide that for us?
Certainly. I think you'll through and...
So how does this relate to the zoning text amendment and the berm?
So the way that it relates, and I can go through, so I'll finish up scenario one. So that was the basis for scenario one. The way it relates is we can use industry-accepted practices to take that type of scenario and then develop an idea of what type of a blast would occur because of it. So we can say that at a radius of so many feet, we expect this many PSI, or pounds per square inch, of blast pressure to exist. The higher that blast pressure is, the closer to the center of the event, the more the damage then is expected to occur. So that's the way that we correlate the design scenario to what we suggest as a distance that... I'll call it a safe distance, but again, it's something that's a sliding scale. But that's how we take the design scenario and put it into a distance. So that's what we've done and what we've evaluated as a distance of somewhere around 700 feet for that design scenario. Gives you about a 0.6 PSI pressure increase. That 0.6 PSI pressure increase correlates to some damage to a wooden residential structure. Windows blown out, some wall damage, something along those lines. Not a catastrophic failure of the structure. So that's where we're using that number in our first scenario. That answer your question of how it correlates back to... Right, excuse me. Thank you. Okay, so any questions on scenario one before I move on? All right. So the second scenario that we considered here is termed a vapor-cloud explosion, or a BCE. In scenario number two, the basis for how this would occur would be some type of a leak occurs in the tank. Either it's a leak from the filling area of the tank, you know, a truck, when they disconnected, for whatever reason, the valve didn't close properly. That safety relief valve that we discussed before may have developed a leak or not seated properly. Any one of a number of things could cause a slow, continuous release of the gas contents, the vapor contents from the tank. Alternatively, you could have a sudden, immediate violent release of tank contents. That could occur from either a blow-off occurring, so during that blevvy event, when the tank is heated and it violently ruptures, it could release the contents. Whatever reason, the contents of the tank are being released into the atmosphere. Those tank contents, as we all know, the vapor in the tank is too concentrated to explode. So, right, we can walk up to a full propane tank, drop a match in, and the match would extinguish. There's not enough air or oxygen in the tank to support an explosion. It's when those contents come out of the tank and begin to mix with the ambient air, that mixture is flammable. So in the vapor-cloud explosion scenario, those contents escape, they begin to mix with the air, and they form a vapor cloud around the tank. Based on wind speed and various other conditions, that vapor cloud can begin to travel. It reaches a point of ignition, which in the world of fire and explosion, we're not too concerned about what the point of ignition is, because they exist everywhere. So the idea is you limit the explosion hazard, not the source of ignition. But in any case, this cloud hits a point of ignition, and it explodes, and causes, again, a pressure wave to emanate from the center of that cloud. What's interesting in the vapor-cloud explosion scenario is that obstacles that you would typically think would decrease the severity of the blast actually increase the severity of the blast. So as a vapor-cloud explosion proceeds through, say, a bank of trees or an intricate piping network in a commercial installation, the explosion pressure markedly increases as it passes through them. So that's why in the vapor-cloud explosion, there is this range of uncertainty and this engineering factor of safety that comes into play to account for those obstructions. If you have a vapor-cloud explosion and it's an open area, you would expect it to be, you know, on the milder side. If it's a congested area, you would expect it to be on the more severe side. So what the analysis for that type of a scenario results in is, on the lower side, somewhere around 820 feet would give you a pressure of a 0.3 PSI, which is some damage to glass window panes, again, some minor damage to a wood structure, those type of damages. And then adding the factor of safety of two to five, on the two level, gives you about a 1,640-foot mark away from the center of that vapor-cloud explosion that you would expect that level of damage. So that's how the second scenario plays out, and that's why there's a wider range on that.
So you're saying that if that happened, anything within 800 feet, is that what you said? Could have glass break?
Sure. The closer you get... So for an example, something about 165 feet away would have more significant damage. It could actually...
So if the tank is in an open field...
Yep. If the tank is in an open field, the damage would be far less than if it was in a congested area with trees because of the effect of these...
And that's for a tank that's not bermed?
That is for... Correct. That's an open tank.
An open 30,000 gallon tank.
An open... Right. The design basis for this was a single 30,000 gallon tank experiencing either one of these two types of failures.
Let me just interject some, maybe common sense questions.
Sure.
Would a 30,000 gallon tank, would there be sensors around that would trigger... The sensors would trigger the fire department? And isn't the... Because you mentioned slow leak, and I questioned that once before, and it was explained to me that you burn it off. There's a unit that goes over and, like you would see at an oil refinery, it just burns it off. So I guess, you know, this death cloud should be triggering all kinds of alarms and sensors all over the place.
Sure. And I don't doubt that it should trigger alarms and sensors all over the place. However, again, in actual practice, it doesn't always happen that way. There are certainly pressure-monitoring devices on the tank. Those can certainly be connected with the fire department. But what the fire department is able to do when they arrive on scene really depends on the size of the leak and where they're comfortable operating. You know, if you have a 30,000 gallon tank that's experiencing a significant leak, your method of attack may be to evacuate the area and protect the surrounding homes rather than to go in and attempt to stop it.
I realize we're talking different scenarios.
Sure.
In all hypothetical...
You're right. An ultra... Certainly, an ultra-slow leak, if things are working properly, should be detected, picked up, and stopped. However, it also depends on, you know, if you have that slow leak on a day when there's no wind, and that can develop into a larger cloud, your risk is higher than if that slow leak develops on a windy day and becomes dissipated in the atmosphere, right?
You know, actually, maybe I'm just scaring myself, because a commercial operation would have these sensors. And, okay, I'll give you one or two not working, but one of them is going to work. As opposed to the gas tank outside my house, no sensors, and, you know, it hasn't been looked at in years. So if that thing's written in the leak, it's more likely to explode next to my house than a storage tank with sensors. Hmm, I got to think about my house, too.
Sure. I don't know that it's more likely to explode. I think the... Again, you're weighing out the level of damage that would occur, right? So in your home tank, in a 20-pound gas grill tank, or even a 500-gallon underground tank, the level of damage is significantly less than in a 30,000 gallon tank. I think that's where it comes into play. I agree with your statement that the sensors and all of those extra safety precautions, the fire-monitor nozzles, everything that goes into a commercial installation is designed to increase the safety. But certainly, there are times when it just does not work as prescribed. You know, that's what makes the six o'clock news, is when it doesn't work as prescribed. And that's kind of, I think, what you're trying to battle out, is how to weigh that and how to have an appropriate risk for the community. So I understood your point. I understand your point.
A question for you, to go back to your examples. Do they have that berm in your examples?
These scenarios were not based on a berm. They were based on an open tank.
Okay. How much is it... Would a berm change those numbers roughly?
Sure. In terms of using... So let's back up. There were two things that were discussed. One was the underground tank, and I think it's useful to mention that when a tank is installed underground, the first scenario, the blevvy scenario, really comes out of the picture, right? Because I'm hard-pressed to come up with a scenario where an underground tank has flame impingement on. So by doing it underground, you kind of eliminate that scenario one of the blevvy. In terms of the berm, my thought is that the berm is most useful to direct the explosive energy. I think some more thought might have to be put into it if your goal was to completely surround it 360 degrees. I think it's a valid point that you can then contain the, you know, contain the propane gas in that. But an earthen berm can certainly be used to, say, shield an area where you have close structures or structures of higher concern, so going back to the idea of residential. Typically, residences are constructed in a manner where lower pressures would cause higher damage than commercial structures. So you could use that berm to direct it. I don't know that I'm comfortable giving you specific numbers without putting some more thought into it.
Okay.
Though I know that's what you're going for, but I'm not comfortable doing that without putting some more analysis into it.
Would you say that they're effective?
I would say that they are certainly effective in controlling the area of explosion, what areas receive the highest pressure.
Sure.
In your examples, you're the 30,000 gallon tank in your 800 feet. On this regulation, I mean, we're looking at 5,000... Or 20... Or 2,500 gallons and 1,500... Or 1,500 feet, let's say, away from any property line. So based on 30,000 gallons, what is the expectation if there was a structure 1,500 feet away from the blast plane?
So the expectations would be for a structure 1,500 feet away, that I would expect minimal damage to that structure on the order of maybe some older, not well-supported glass panes shattering, and that would probably be the limit of the damage that I would expect based on those two scenarios.
And then if you put... If you had 30,000 gallons in a berm, you would...
Less than that.
If, yeah, if there's some... Next week, or in two weeks, the next meeting, if you can just maybe provide a little more context around that, because if berm's part of the regulation, can you give some ideas of what the actual impact is with that?
Sure.
All right. And can you also base it off of the... Well, let's base it on a max of 5,000, just so we got a starting point.
So you're saying use a 5,000 gallon...
Well, that's what the regulation's calling for. So the 30,000 gallon is not part of this regulation currently. I mean, if somebody wanted 30,000 gallons, you'd have to go for specialty use for various other vehicles to do that. So let's base it on what this regulation basically proposes. Use the higher end of the regulation of 5,000, and if you provide that data, that'd be very nice.
Sure.
If an explosion should happen, would the tank not explode upwards also?
So a lot of things come into play with the direction. In most cases, you're correct that the tank typically launches with some upward direction. But it depends where the fire is located. It depends what area of the tank weakens first. Usually, it... So usually, the area of the tank that weakens is... Move that out. It depends on the scenario. Where the tank launches is a function of a lot of things, and I'm uncomfortable telling you exactly how that would work. Up is, you know, a direction, and it can certainly turn into a projectile. Of more concern would be the fragments that come off of that tank. Those can launch further. But typically, it's the blast wave that causes more damage, which is why we focused on that, rather than the tank fragments or the tank itself. Launching a 30,000 gallon tank takes a considerable amount of energy, and the distance that it travels, I would be more concerned about the pressure wave and smaller fragments.
Does NFPA have any requirements for testing of these safety systems?
Sure. So the applicable code for NFPA is NFPA 58, which is the LPG, liquefied petroleum gas code. They go through many of the safety systems. They require a certain periodic testing of them, and they also fall back onto the designers of the tank itself to do testing. So ASME, American Society of Mechanical Engineers, sets the guidelines for the tank itself, and there can be some periodic testing requirements from ASME as well. But yes, they do.
While we're talking about that, the regulation that's being proposed talks about LNG, so liquefied natural gas, and it says including propane. Can you just talk about, in town, it seems like there's more tanks of propane than LNG, than gas?
Sure.
So I guess I just wanted some clarification on... I believe LNG and LPG are two totally different things, and NFP 58 is different than what regulates LNG?
Right. So LPG is liquefied petroleum gas, right? So you have LPG, which can be a few sources, but in this case is propane. They're both liquefied and stored under pressure to keep them in the liquid state. When that pressure is released, they turn into a vapor, and the vapor becomes a usable form. The difference of, you know, LNG, CNG-type fuels is that they require a higher pressure. They're more difficult to keep in a liquid form. They're more difficult to transport. So usually, they come out of the feed line. Natural gas comes out of the feed line only. Can't be tanked, can't be shipped. Propane is a much more useful... In terms of delivery, is a much easier fuel to deliver using on-ground transport rather than pipelines. But NFPA 58 covers the whole gamut of liquefied petroleum gas, LPG.
Thank you.
Sure. Okay. Absolutely.
And just one more thing. And did you have any other scenarios?
Those... No, those were the two that we considered for this. Those are usually the highest-risk scenarios, are either a blevvy or the vapor-cloud explosion. So those are the only two that were considered for this. Thank you for your time.
Thanks.
Okay, Chris Crank.
Yeah.
The applicant for the... Paul the Dr. So what I'm going to do now is, we're going to show a few reasons why we think propane facility distributed, you know, being distributed on those four lots, there's things we need to really be concerned about. So we're going to look at two cases that just happened in Florida just last year, where two vents failed to close, similar to what we were just discussing about the vents. And in one of them, it had just been inspected by the state six months prior and signed off on as part of its normal safety inspections.
The properties on Zero Road. Obviously, there is an application in progress right now to put propane there. If that limit is allowed to keep going up and up and more and more propane gets added there, you can imagine that these concentric circles you see here that indicate the blast zone.
I can't read what those are on the screen, but what's the, let's start from the outside. What's the outside circle?
The black line is the one-mile evacuation zone.
And the one-mile evacuation is based on this regulation?
You want to speak to us?
The one-mile, I can play catch.
The one-mile.
What's the one-mile from? What's that based off of?
The one-mile, okay. So, the one-mile is typically based off of a worst-case scenario of a vapor cloud and the largest distance that it can travel.
And it's, again, is that a 30,000-gallon tank or?
I believe the Emergency Response Guidebook has a range and it takes that for most commercial installations for a one-mile suggested.
So whether it's a 20,000 or 2,500-gallon or 30,000-gallon tank, it's a one-mile radius?
That's correct. I'd have to go back to give you an exact, but that order of magnitude stays at one-mile.
Okay.
And then, the inside circle there, the closely dotted line is the radius of about 800 feet, which Brian, as well as being the damage already felt on a single $30,000, 30,000-gallon tank explosion, the larger dotted line around that is applying a safety factor two, pushes that out to about 6,000 feet. And it's hard to see on the screen, but a lot of people here know this. There are a number of residences within sight, both of those circles. Okay, so this is the last slide then. I just want to emphasize that the point of this presentation and many of what you're going to hear tonight is not to try and argue that propane is inherently bad thing and the sky is falling. But to emphasize that propane leaks and accidents can and do have, even when all the regulations are falling. And they do happen. Evacuations often result in potentially catastrophic explosions of mere result. And, you know, the really simple principle of work here, the math is quite straightforward. The more tanks you have, the greater the risk of a failure. The more propane you have, the greater the consequence of that failure. Hence, this is why we believe that bulk propane storage needs to have appropriate sensible regulations on it. So, thank you for your attention.
Okay, so if you have any questions?
I have one question for Brian. Brian, when you have a leak, doesn't the vapor hover close to the ground? And you mentioned something about when it mixes with air. What is the scenario of mixing with air that's going to cause it to explode?
Sure. So what happens is, in the propane tank, the way that it's stored, it's only propane, right? To have a fire, it needs to be a mixture of a flammable gas such as propane plus air, which contains the oxygen. So unless that ultra-concentrated propane gas is mixed with air, it can't support a fire. So what happens is, as the propane gas is released from the tank, it mixes just by, if you can envision a plume coming out of a tank, and it would churn and mix with the air. And what that does is, it produces an area that's very close to the tank, that's too concentrated to support a fire, and it produces an area that's way far away from the tank that's not concentrated enough in propane to have a fire. But the area between the two is where that flammable vapor cloud exists, and that's where your fire or explosion can happen. You're absolutely correct in stating that it's denser than air, but a lot of times in an outside scenario, it's more driven by wind currents. It can be driven by the density, and all things being equal, it will absolutely fall to the ground. But in a scenario with even a few miles an hour of wind, it will tend to churn and follow the path of the wind rather than simply settle to the ground.
And so, does that make it ignite spontaneously?
No, it always needs an ignition source, but ignition sources are many, and it's very difficult to eliminate or remove those. A running engine, you know, a cigarette, a light that's not specifically designed for an explosive atmosphere, a pumping motor, you know, you name it. If that vapor cloud extends to an area where even a small spark exists, that can be enough to set.
Well, how far away? When does it become inactive? How far, how much air does it mix with before it kind of dissipates into the atmosphere?
Excellent question, and there are models and ways to be able to do that. We did not undertake that for this portion of the study, but there are ways to figure that out. So, you know, what can be done is to say, given the following wind conditions and atmospheric conditions and temperature, you would expect a cloud to extend from this many feet to this many feet. It can be done, but it hasn't been done for this, so I'm reluctant to give you numbers to point on that.
It's only because most of our industrial zones, or one of the biggest ones we have, is all open land.
Sure.
So, I'm curious as to how far this vapor will travel, that it would be non-existent if longer.
Sure. And, you know, we're on the order of hundreds to 1,000 feet, somewhere in that order, but beyond that, anything more than that, I would really have to sit down and work the models out. There's software that's available to do it. It's not, it's not a terribly difficult task, it just hasn't been undertaken at this point.
There's a couple scenarios that were on the presentation with the valve failure. In both cases, obviously, the emergency crews, fire departments were able to respond to it. What is the, you know, what happens, what kind of time we want to, like, I'm sure if there's a valve failure, I'm not going to say sure. If there is a valve failure, there might be some redundancy systems or alarms that go off. So can you just run through of like, what that scenario is and what kind of timing? Because, I mean, just from that scenario, there was a response that kept it from igniting. But can you just enlighten us what that actually is and the timing?
Sure. So, I mean, I can speak to.
Let me just add my questions.
Yep.
On the second scenario, wasn't that tank acting as designed? It was burning off, and I'll go back to what I said before when I asked, you know, what happens if there's a valve failure?
Sure.
There's a unit that goes on the valve. We'll make a assumption, assumption in my scenario, that yes, the thing is leaking. The gas comes down, it triggers other sensors, which all the fire department would show up with this unit, put it on, and start burning it off. I mean, that's what that looked like.
Sure.
It didn't explode, it burned off for hours.
Sure. That, to me, looked like a jet flame that was in place. I'm not sure that that was by design in terms of, you know, a department coming in and attaching a piece of equipment to do that, or whether that was simply a pressure release that found a source of ignition and happened to start burning. I will say that that scenario is preferable to a release without burning, because at least with burning, you can see that's where your danger is, and you're not having a vapor cloud expand. If that flame goes out, now you have this invisible vapor cloud that's expanding, and some small ignition can cause a large explosion. So the flaming off is certainly preferable. Whether that was intentional or not, I can't speak to that. In terms of the timing for what happens, obviously, that's very scenario-dependent. You know, you can have anything from a small leak resulting from a failure of the filling port, you know, when a truck leaves, if that doesn't seal properly, all the way up to a much, much larger leak ended result of one of the overpressure valves failing, or some other, some other interconnection of a larger diameter failing. So the timing is a bit difficult to, you know, give you a specific on. When the fire department would be notified is really based on the control systems and the personnel that are available at the plant. If there are control systems that report back a pressure drop, or in a more advanced scenario like you're talking of, that actually do the gas monitoring in the neighboring area, certainly that increases the response time. The fire department's response, that's really something that the local fire department needs to speak to, and their actions is something that they need to speak to. But what you saw, there was a prototypical response in the fire department, which is to put a water mist on it, which does a few things. It cools the tank, and it tends to disperse the vapors that come out.
You know, there's thousands of tanks all over the country, and it seems like we've only heard about a minuscule amount that have had accidents. I was wondering what really the percentage is of problems happening with these tanks? I mean, you know, every time we've read or heard, of course, naturally, it's, I mean, it's media, but taking in consideration that, as I say, there's thousands of tanks all over the country, it doesn't seem like, you know, the percentage is that high.
Yeah, I think it's a great question, and it's a huge research project, really, to run them all down. But one way to address the issue, well, there's two cases that happened in Florida just last year, and we haven't looked at great length and done the research to get, you know, the exact answer to your question. But neighboring towns, Guilford, I mean Madison and Branford, Madison has a 20,000-gallon capacity with a special permit, and Branford has a 12,000 with a special permit. So, when you have some regulation that brings into a special permit status where you consider public safety and more thoroughly look at these situations and buy yourself some time, you know, we think that's a good thing.
So, we'll finish with our part of the presentation.
Okay, well, Carrie's going to introduce some of the reviews that we have.
Okay.
So, I did refer the application to various departments. I've only referred back from two so far. One is the Fire Marshal, and he submitted a memo saying that the state of Connecticut has regulations for liquefied petroleum gas and liquefied natural gas code, also in accordance with NFPA 54 and NFPA 58. And he submitted a copy of those regulations. If any of the commissioners were interested in seeing them, I can make copies and I'll send them around to you. I also circulated this to the South Central Connecticut Regional Planning Commission. They reviewed the application and did not see any issues. They said, "Thank you for sharing the proposed zoning regulation amendments." They reviewed the proposal on February 12th. By resolution, the RPC has determined that the proposed zoning regulation amendments do not appear to cause any negative intermunicipal impacts to the towns in the South Central region, nor do there appear to be any impact to the habitat or ecosystem of the Long Island Sound. So in summary, those were the only two that I've received so far. As they come in, I'll share them with the commission. Oh, sorry, one other thing. I also have received correspondence from residents, and I've just summarized this. So, in correspondence from the following people, they've expressed support for the proposed text amendment. So I've received pretty much the same form letter, and again, in summary, it's in support of this proposed text amendment. I can read the residents. Chris Kranek, Krista Supernat, Joseph Vita, Lawrence and Kathleen Goodmaster, the Dudley Harrisons, Robert and Norine Cullen, Carmel Castavietro, Raymond Bernardini, Chris Ann Vought, Paul and Bertie Tracy, Virginia Broadbent, Timothy and Geraldine Formenski, Sal and Joanne Sigliano, excuse me if I mess up your names, Julia Stell, Judeice, and Andrew Hugard.
At this time, we will start to take public comment for anybody who would like to speak. So earlier, before the meeting started, can somebody bring it up? Nancy, if you mind. What we'll do for the next 25 minutes is, we will be taking public comment, and I'll just read out the names so far that are on here. After I get through all the names, if anybody else wants to speak, by all means, you can come up. But we will be, we will continue this public hearing. We will not close it tonight. We will continue it to the next meeting on Thursday, March 5th. So, the first person on the list if they would like to speak is... You're better off with this.
Keith Ainsworth.
Keith Ainsworth.
And he already spoke.
Okay, yeah.
And Chris Kranek.
All right, Brian, who's still?
Brian. Kevin Curry.
Do you want, do you want?
Krista Supernat.
Good evening. Krista Supernat, Oregonist Drive. So, on June 19th, at your 2014, at the planning and zoning meeting, about halfway through there, you guys had TruSewer come in to ask him many questions, and he did, I watched the video many times, and he did a fantastic job explaining a lot of what goes into this. But right at the end, he did state, and again, I got to tell you this, as I said before, the bobtails that traverse the community, in my mind, they're more of a risk than a big storage facility, because they can become involved in an automobile accident anytime, and an exterior valve, even though there are safeties on them, become a problem for us. So that's what I would like to speak to, is the idea of having the extra traffic and congestion on our roadways. So accidents on the site of any proposed bulk propane facilities in the Zero Road area are not the only hazard to the community. The tankers will be on all of the roads, and of course, heavily concentrated on Route 80, if that is where we said the Zero Road is the spot where these things will be. These facilities are generally open as early as 7:30 a.m. until around 4:30 p.m. I checked into some of the other ones in Connecticut for their normal business hours in different parts of the state. So, on any one of those possible sites now, zoned for bulk propane use, there'll be any number of drivers going in and out with their deliveries at the same time our school buses are starting out in the morning, and the same time they're coming home in the evening. I know many of us, especially in the Zero Road, even quarter-mile where I am, have children, small children, that are just starting into school or into high school, or my 10-month-old who will be soon, in a couple of years. So, we can't guarantee that those drivers are alert. Some of accidents that I'll give you later in my presentation were the fault of the driver. They had been on the road for too many hours, like toward the end of their shifts, and caused accidents. Some drivers, you know, are checking their phones, they're looking for backroad shortcuts to get to their deliveries on time and as quick as possible. Other drivers on the road, all ages, we have many students driving to school, getting to work on time. This is an unnecessary risk, to keep it as is and not put these zoning regulations in. Another concern beyond the bobtails are those much larger tankers that will be traversing the roadways. They are the ones that, as stated earlier, used to keep the 30,000-gallon facility tanks filled. Some of the numbers earlier, I think, were a little conservative. I did a little research online as if I was going to buy some of these myself, and I found that they typically, typically carry around 10,000 gallons in those tanker trucks, and that the bobtails typically would be around 2,500 to 5,000, all right, of the trucks on the town. So this would be obviously disastrous in the case of a road accident. Earlier, what was alluded to was November 21st, 2006, 3:25 in the afternoon in Guilford on Soundview Road, when a tanker rolled over on that road trying to make a delivery at the Hocon Gas Bulk Storage Facility located in the industrial dome. According to the official NFIRS-1 report that was filed, there was immediate evacuation initiated within a quarter-mile of that tanker. Power was shut down in that area, shelters were opened, the state Fire Marshal and entry team with DEP were on the scene, plus other public safety personnel were transported by Polaris to the accident site. A hazmat operation was established to pump as much of that 10,000 gallons, I think at the time, there's about 9,600 in there, from the tanker as possible. Three large wreckers were brought in to right the vehicle. All the roads were closed in a quarter-mile. There was two schools that were ordered not to open. Amtrak was shut down. It did affect I-95. Businesses in the area were closed, residents evacuated. It took 18 and a half hours. As stated earlier, it was 12, it was 18 and a half hours. A week later, the register reported that they had to put a few people in hotels overnight and a few elected to stay in the community centers by the First Selectmen. The utility pole was taken out, replaced that day. Town emergency workers have only now completely caught up from the incident that forced people from their homes and businesses. It kept state and local officials holding their breath for 16 hours while they stabilized the truck. The truck came to rest on its side on a patch of marshy ground. Our emergency services performed wonderfully. I'm going to say the First Selectman's name at the time, Carl Balzstracki, if I'm saying it correctly. We also were very lucky, too. If that truck had overturned on pavement, if this getting caused a leak or some spark, so much could have gone wrong. Yale New Haven Hospital and its satellite clinic in Guilford remained on standby the entire night. Connecticut Medical Emergency Dispatch, which coordinates ambulance coverage to the region, also had resources at the ready, as did all surrounding municipal police and fire departments for mutual aid. The cost to the town was still unknown at that time, with department heads from police, fire, public works, recreation, still calculating the cost. So he said, "A great job was done by very many people with a very real threat ever presence." I looked up other propane truck accidents, just since January of this year, January 2nd, there was one in Arlington, Texas. January 3rd, Lancaster County, PA. January 19th, Fayette, Maine, one dead. January 21st, Lincolnwood, Maryland. January 31st, Azetta Township, Ohio. February 11th, Cumberland County, Pennsylvania. And February 13th, Cable County, West Virginia. At the time that I looked this up, the driver was still in critical condition. So, if this same scenario were to happen in our town, what would those numbers look like for us? I looked at a quarter-mile using the same idea, as if it took place possibly around the Atwater Library area, close to Zero Road for deliveries, and also where it kind of narrows in, I've seen a lot of near-car accidents, people trying to speed around in that area. So taking a kind of a rough count in that area, for evacuation purposes, 254 homes, many which are historical and recognized by our Historical and Architectural Survey of North Branford, and that includes two condo complexes and several dead-end roads where probably more people would need to be evacuated, because they wouldn't be able to get out if something else happened. The number of businesses or commercial building shops were approximately 30, including two gas stations. The streets, including Route 80 and Route 22, Notchell Road, about 13, two churches, two takehers, one library. So that's all just in a quarter-mile. And in the event of a traffic accident, an evacuation would take place, such as in Guilford, there was no leak, there was no fire, everything worked as it should be and luckily happens, but there was still an evacuation of all those people and all those businesses had to shut down. So, think, if you move that quarter-mile to anywhere else in town, you're probably going to find our schools involved, you're probably going to find other congested residential areas, you might find Town Hall, you might find Tilcon, there's many historic properties to consider, you're going to find many, you know, situations going on. And is it worth it, having that sort of threat in our community? So the disruption, the congestion, the uncertainty, the interrupted cost of businesses, and the cost of the town. The safety plan, how would we evacuate everybody, especially if it happened during a school day? I am not aware of the school's evacuation plans in this district, of what would happen, how they would get the kids out, where their refuge of safety is. I know for the district where I teach where all those things are, it's not out of a quarter-mile distance. And just last week, in a town in Connecticut, and the name is leaving me now, they did have to evacuate, not for propane, for something else, but they did have to evacuate, and the kids had to walk that quarter-mile or so, and some had to be treated for frostbite, you know, because of that. You wouldn't get the buses here in time to evacuate in that sort of situation. If you research the cost of propane truck accidents, there's a huge variance, depends on the severity of the different things, but on average, you know, being a little conservative on the conservative side, approximately 100,000, upward to 2 million, billed to the town where they took place. This doesn't take into account the cost to other organizations such as the Red Cross or other towns labeled as mutual aid that they had to incur as well. Under the current language, we have insufficient zoning regulations for the proper management of potential bulk propane dealers who will target North Branford to establish their businesses. Presently, with no amount of propane that might be stored on each property with the exception of fire code, the safety regulations, they're insufficient to protect the many neighborhoods and properties that surround those I-2 industrial zones from adverse effects of fire and explosion that might occur. There's insufficient notice given to nearby properties and the town as a whole. When reading a portion of our 1980 history of North Branford by Janice Regan, I came across an interesting quote, and it was from the 1971 Plan of Development presented by the Planning and Zoning Commission of this town. And the quote says, "The country atmosphere is an attraction for present and new residents. It should be preserved as representing the fundamental character of North Branford. The lack of proper regulations creates a discord between our community's quality of life and this type of industrial development. We envision sensible regulations that will protect our family's safety and well-being that are consistent with our fundamental character of the town." We have, on August 7th, we approved to have zoning regulations to allow for storage and retail of bulk propane in North Branford. So this is why we are now here tonight, to define what that will look like for our town. On a personal note, I kind of added this as people were talking, we have bulk propane, and this, we're telling you as the citizen, this is what we can live with. We may not want it, you know, I don't, I don't know personally how many of you might live in the quarter-mile where I do versus the half-a-mile versus the mile versus not at all, but this is maybe what I can live with, a quarter-mile. I moved to this town with my husband, he grew up here, his whole family is here. I have a five-year-old, a four-year-old, and a 10-month-old. We didn't move to this house to have to have this kind of a worry. We moved here for the small town, the community, the family, and that's what we want to have here. So, to me, it doesn't matter what a company thinks, it doesn't matter what a company thinks. It matters what we think in this town, and we're here for the citizens of this town. So, we matter, it matters what we think, because we're here representing this town. Any company that comes in here, I stated before, they should have the burden of having to prove to us and to you that they belong here with us. They, we shouldn't have the burden of standing up and proving why we matter more than a company does. So, thank you.
So next on the list is James Flaherty.
My name is James Flaherty. I'm on 229 Branford Road, North Branford. My, I have two concerns. One is NFPS 58 mandates a one-mile evacuation zone. I want to make a distinction here. You're talking about liquefied petroleum gas, and you're talking about liquefied natural gas. Liquefied petroleum natural gas is only handled as a cryogenic, super-cool liquid. It can't be compressed and contained in a tank unless it's super-cooled. The pressure it would develop would blow the tanks up. So, they ship natural gas through pipes. In fact, there's a major transmission pipe apparently that runs through North Branford. But it's only a gas, it's not a liquid, it's never a liquid. The only time they liquefy it is when they ship it in these massive tankers from overseas. They're thinking about putting a natural gas terminal out in the middle of Long Island Sound, and they did that because they were going to ship millions of gallons of this super-cool natural gas in these enormous tankers. Very dangerous, like a nuclear weapon going off, whatever blew up. That gas, unless it's being held in a industrial warehouse here in town in one of these industrial zones, would never be present in North Branford. Normally, hospitals handle cryogenic gases like oxygen, nitrogen, well, a whole slew of different industrial and medical gases, and they use a lot of cryogenic gases for various medical procedures. Research and development, manufacturing, they use cryogenic gases, and so, I don't know if any of that comes into, under these regulations, but specifically, the regulations that our group has put together, that we are proposing, apply to liquefied... the regulations that our group has put together, that we are proposing, apply to liquefied propane. The propane can be liquefied at about 200 pounds per square inch, I believe, at standard temperature and pressure, which is 72 degrees Fahrenheit. Standard temperature and pressure is one atmosphere at 72 degrees Fahrenheit. In order to liquefy propane at 72 degrees, you have to compress it to about 200, I believe, pounds per square inch. This relates because in discussing these tanks with these emergency pressure release valves, those valves are designed to, I believe the pop-off valves are designed for around a 250 pound per square inch pressure relief. So between 200 pounds, which is reasonable, and 250 pounds, which is beginning to become unreasonable, those valves open. Now, your refrigerator in your air conditioner function by taking a gas like propane or ammonia or some other gas, and compressing it into a liquid, which is similar to the propane sitting in a tank, the gas is then released into a gas, and as it expands, because of Bernoulli's law, it absorbs heat. In order for the gas to expand, it has to absorb heat. In the process, it creates cooling at the expansion valve. That's what creates the cold for your freezer, your refrigerator, and your air conditioner in your carhouse. The problem with these propane tank expansion valves is that when the gas expands out of those tanks, those valves super-cool the air, the metal, I mean, of the valves, consequently the air immediately surrounding it. The atmosphere condenses water, which then freezes inside the valves, if it's allowed to, and the valves stick. That's probably what happened in Florida, the valves pop off, super-cool the vent tube, water condensed inside this tube, dropped onto the pop-off valve, the spring-loaded valve, and gummed up the works. That is exactly how the valve would misfunction. And then, once the water freezes the valve, it's like a big ball bearing, freezes it open, that gas coming out keeps that water frozen at, it could be 200 degrees below zero, it's incredibly cold when this stuff comes out and passes these valves. And that locks the safety valve up, that's why they have problems with these. And it's a design fault with all gas, it's when you expand the gas, it's super-cooled, it's a big engineering problem. So that's probably what happened in Florida, where they have very high humidity, very warm temperatures, they get a lot of venting. It's safety venting, it's normal, it gets 160 degrees in the sunlight, the tank gets hot, the gas comes out, valve cools, you get a condensation, the valve gets coated in water, it freezes open, and boom, you got a problem. That's the kind of leaks you're getting. That will happen here in the summertime. We'll have the exact same thing happen, those tanks are sitting out in that field. If you stand in the broad sunlight with a metal plate like your car hood, it might be 90 degrees, the air temperature, but that metal gets up to 100 or 150 degrees, it gets very warm. The sand on the beach around here, we all have had that experience, try walking on the sand, it's 150 degrees, it burns your feet, or 120, whatever. So the tank of heat, it'll begin to vent, the humidity is the highest in the summertime, we're going to have the exact same problem. Now, I'm not an expert about these valves, but I know this, I'm sure those valves have to be replaced periodically, just because of the wear and tear, probably every couple of years or something, just because that's the primary safety for those tanks. But we could check into that, find out more information on it. But the point is, is that these tanks will be in the summertime, that's mostly where these valves stick open, and the reason they stick is because it's super-cooling from the venting gas. On Cyril Road, and I've brought this up to all the members, I've personally delivered information to some of you, I've sent you letters, I've done all kinds of things, and it has to do with a lightning, an enhanced lightning danger at 40 Cyril Road, at the Cyril Road industrial site, the entire site, all five of those sites. Every child in America is told, "Do not stand under a high thing like a tree in a lightning storm." I mean, can anybody tell me that's not common folkism? It is. It is because trees and high structures attract lightning. That's a fact. The research I did indicates that high structures such as water towers and cell towers are four times as likely to be hit by lightning as the structures of average height in any given area. In other words, if houses and trees and everything over a large area are all about 40 feet high, anything that's six above that is going to be four to 10 times more likely to get hit rather than the other items. It just happens to be one of the characteristics of lightning strikes. That's a very important consideration, though it has never been brought up in the planning and zoning since the text change was made originally that was loud as. And I believe that's a technical reason that needs to be studied very thoroughly, and I think might disqualify propane storage completely in this town. But in the event that it doesn't, it greatly increases the likelihood that anything that is stored under that cell tower is going to have an increased likelihood to be hit by lightning. And lightning, well, lightning is hotter than the surface of the sunlight lands, it's capable of welding a hole through the three-quarter, five-eighths inch tank that the propane is stored in. It could literally blow a hole in one of those tanks, not a problem, lightning bolt hits it, boom, just like an electric arc. Doesn't happen a lot, but in our case here in town, because we have a cell tower next to it, we have an enhanced threat. I don't believe there's any propane bulk storage plants anywhere in the state that has a similar situation, although that might be looked into. I don't think that any of the other bulk storage plants have an increased lightning strike danger. I think that should be checked into, but all this takes huge amounts of time and effort and money and so forth, so. Okay, let's see. The next issue is a one-mile evacuation radius. The NFPA 58 regulations stipulate a one-mile evacuation radius in most propane situations, whether it's an incident with fire, danger of explosion. There are several homes, there are three homes that are above within 500 feet of 40 Cyril Road, which is what started all this, but there are about 20 homes that are above the Cyril Road industrial site, all along Glenwood Road. All those homes are within the 800-foot zone that the blast expert discussed. Every one of them would have some danger within that zone. Excuse me a second, I gotta put my glasses on here. The closer you are to the center of this, any incident, any kind of danger, the greater the danger to the residents, the business, whatever it is. That's common sense, but the pressure wave declines by the square, inverse square of the distance, which means if you double the distance, the pressure wave drops off by the square of the distance. At 200 feet, if the issue is point, is one pound per square inch, if you double that, it drops by the square. It quickly drops as you move away. So the pressure, the overpressure that he was talking about, the 0.6 pounds per square inch, will damage the buildings. That's important near in. But the danger, you have to ask yourself, why do they mandate a one-mile evacuation zone around one of these incidents? And there's a reason for that. Murdock, Illinois, had a railcar that came off the tracks, caught fire, and eventually blew up in a blabby. The 12,000-pound tank flew 3,650 feet, that's just under seven-tenths of a mile. What they didn't discuss, or what they didn't say about that is also probably several hundred hard objects, dirt, the ballast under the railroad tracks, metal bolts, pieces of pipe, pieces of tank metal, anything that is hard and fragile that breaks up and flies becomes a missile. So the danger is that at a mile's distance, you might have 200 or 1,000 pieces of shrapnel flying out from the explosion. Of course, at a mile's distance, your chances of getting hit may be 100,000 to 1, or 1,000 to 1, some huge amount, but if you're sitting at dinner with your family and a one-inch nut in the bolt that broke off, come flying through the wall of your dining room at 600 miles an hour and hits your child in the head and kills him, you really don't care that you were risked back, it was only 1,000 to 1, because in your incidents, it was 100% that your child was going to be killed by this explosion. So we can discuss risk factors in those terms, but the problem is, it's already really important to the people who are hurt. It only becomes a catastrophic reality to the people who are damaged physically by this explosion. Everybody's risk is small, but some people's risk is 100%. And that's what we're talking about here. Now, here's another thing nobody's discussed. The one-mile evacuation applies to a 5,000-gallon tank, a 1,000-gallon tank, a 30,000-gallon tank, because the shrapnel from an explosion like this, no matter what size the tank is, flies about the same distance for all of those explosions. A 1,000-gallon tank throws out shrapnel that can go a mile, up to a mile and a half, as far as I've been able to read, just like the metal and the fence parts that have been there from a 30,000-gallon tank. So a 30,000 or 10,000-gallon tank throws out many more pieces of shrapnel. But the point is, is that the blast energy is about the same for each one of those explosions, because the energy that's transferred to the shrapnel depends upon its face, the surface of its face, facing the blast. And the blast pressure at the sound of a blast like that is about the same, whether it's 30,000 gallons, 10,000 gallons, or 1,000 gallons. So a piece of metal that's launched is probably going to be running about the speed of sound, and it's going to fly a long, long, long way. Okay, so that's the reason that they use a one-mile evacuation zone. People, I think, should be aware of that in the town, this is a real danger. Okay. Now, much less serious is the inconvenience, but that's going to be inconvenient, very inconvenient. There are 2,300 residents within the one-mile blast zone, there are 1,600 or 1,700 individual residents, there are 80 businesses, and there are at least three kind of names in one or two apartment buildings with something like 600 people in them. All those people are going to have to get up and walk away from their life for the term of this evacuation. And the evacuations are mandated pretty much, no matter what happens. I'm not sure exactly who's going to declare the evacuation, how they're going to do it, but if there's any kind of serious accident with one of these facilities, it could be 5,000 gallons, it could be 10 or 30 or whatever, somebody's going to say, "We've got to evacuate." And they're going to say, "How many?" In most cases, it's going to be a mile, and all those people are going to have to get up and go. It could happen at 3:00 in the morning, it could happen at 12:00 in the afternoon, it could happen at dinnertime, it could happen any time of the day, it just depends. And the town has to respond. Now, 2,200 and 2,300 people, that's a sixth of the town, that's a lot of people who are going to have to get up and move. But unfortunately, the only I-zone that will allow propane right now is Cyril Road. So the burden falls disproportionately on North Branford, on southern North Branford, on the district of North Branford, as opposed to North or Foxon or the various other areas. So the rest of the town is going, "Well, you know, I don't live in a one-mile blast zone, so everybody don't care." Well, the problem is, is that the expense for one of these evacuations, and also, incidentally, the devaluation of the property values because of this facility is going to spread out all over the town, and so really the whole town's going to be blown up, whether they like it or not, and everybody's going to suffer because of these propane storage facilities. Early on in this, it was mentioned that there's 80, $37,000, $80,000 was this suggested tax increase a year. Nobody knew, nobody could say. I went to the tax assessor, and I said, "You know, if you have a, we have a $1 billion, $100 million property value for the town, Grand West, what happens if the $100 million value goes away?" And I don't know if the man said this with tongue-in-cheek, I was going to take it back, he's since apparently left the, as the assessor, the new assessor. He said, "Well, that's no problem, just raise the mold rate." And he did laugh, so I took it serious, and I thought, "My goodness, this is the way we're going to deal with a massive devaluation of a substantial portion of the value of the property of the town? They're just going to raise the tax rate? Okay, well, I don't know." So that should be taken into consideration. Now, none of this directly applies to you because you're planning and zoning, but I don't know if you have an economic component in your planning and zoning. Is that part of your perm deal? Or is that just the economic, is there some economic plan in town?
Well, I think it would be included in the plan of conservation and development. There's an economic development component.
All right, well, okay, so those are the things that I'm concerned about, and I just wanted to put those things in the record, because they haven't gotten discussed very much, they're very important, they're going to affect everybody in the town in a negative way. And the only counterbalancing value that I can see from this going forward is, you know, $100,000 in taxes or something, increase in the tax base of the town. My thinking is, I could probably find businesses that could bring in that $100,000 and get them into Cyril Road if I set my mind there. If I were the town economic development person, I'm sure I could, because there's good land there, and the laws, by and large, for most industries are progressive and open-minded. I just think propane, the cost of propane, when you figure all the costs in, is just going to be way, way too high. And because of that, at the very least, I think, the regulations that are being put forward here tonight will help to mitigate some of the damage done by opening the town up to propane storage. It may not stop it, but at least it will reduce the damage. And I think the regulations are reasonable, but I also think these issues that I brought up should be considered before you just go ahead and approve propane for North Branford, whether it's J.J. Sullivan or 5,000 gallons or whatever. I don't think bulk storage of propane is a good use of the Industrial Recycling Act, and that's pretty well my statement.
As I mentioned earlier, that we had a time limit at 9 o'clock, but we went a little bit past that. We do have the list of people who signed up, who didn't have a chance to speak tonight, so at the next meeting, we'll continue right down the list. We'll also be putting this list back out for any people who are here tonight that maybe didn't get on the list, or other people that come at the next meeting. So we will continue this public hearing in our next meeting, 7 o'clock. So, we will continue this public hearing at our next meeting, 7:00, same location, March 5. And in the meantime, we're going to take a five-minute recess. And we'll come back at about quarter after. Commission is back into order. The next, the next order of business is...
What do you want to, do we actually take action?
No, we continue that.
Do you want to, okay. I guess.
Yes.
Okay.
The booze.
Yeah, so, yeah, Plan Zone Application 2014-15-12, that's going to be continued to the next, to the next meeting. We'll pick up on old business. The first one is PZ Application 2014-15-5. That's the applicant Cone and Akapora. And that's the one where we had the three options on. So, I think we should, I think we should start having a discussion. I mean, I think we left it off where we looked at the three options.
Maybe we're going to take one and make it, and adjust it.
Yeah, so, I don't have a copy of that, of the three.
Here, I have the three.
You have a copy? Oh, all right. All right. Anyhow.
Maybe we could take the sections one at a time because I think the measurement's the same on all of the options.
Yeah, I think, and Karen clarified each of those on the bottom.
Yeah.
So...
So, if we could, if we agree...
Then we can do that. So, I think one of the things that this regulation was, the reason why it was proposed is, one, is to clarify the measurement where maybe it wasn't as clear in the past. It actually wasn't, and when there was one, the most recent move, it wasn't properly done. So, I think that was a combination. But at least in this regulation, the measurement's clearly defined, or at least let's talk about that, as Charlie mentioned, that's the same option, or the same text in each of the three options.
So, in my, in my comment sheet, that should be in your packet.
Yeah.
It's on the top of page three. There, okay, that's new measurement language.
And that's because we added, like, the playground and stuff like that, correct?
Yes.
All right.
So, that's the new 54.2.
One suggestion. That's my suggestion.
So, just to recall, we said, college building, it's the nearest corner of any church, that's the physical corner, correct, of the building?
Yes. And that's what we, that's what the original regulations have.
All required distance shall be measured from the nearest corner of any building or premise used as a liquor outlet to the nearest corner...
And then, some of the options, it suggests that we say, "Building or premises."
And that's what, yeah, that's, "From any corner of any building or premise." Yep.
Right. And measured in a straight line, which actually makes sense.
We have the word premise in the...
Yep.
In the option...
Right, the change would be adding in, "Or from the nearest property line of town-owned school," whereas right now, it's the school building.
Yeah.
And it would also be the nearest property line of any town-owned, says, "School, park, playground, or recreational facility." So, we had talked a little bit about fields and playing fields, how to treat those. So, that's why I added in recreational facility.
So, that's actually in option three, right?
It's in all three options. I think it is.
Yeah.
I think it was just the same, yeah.
So, that takes care of it.
So, I mean, is everybody, is every, Ron, you're good with that, that part of it?
Yes.
All right. Is there another one we can hit?
Let's just look at the next one. Discontinuance is the same everywhere.
You have one, two, and three options, right?
Yeah.
Is that the same on all three?
Sorry?
The next section was a discontinuance?
Yes. The, there's the question about adding the language of valid existing permit, but otherwise discontinuance is in the existing regs. That's, that's nothing new.
Okay.
There's only the phrase of, the valid existing permit.
Yeah, I didn't know.
And we were just trying to talk about, what, breaking that down and interpreting And I believe what that's saying, my interpretation is, if there's an existing liquor store that has a permit that is located less than 500 feet from a church or school, if that, if it's discontinued for whatever reason, for a year or longer, it has to then conform to the distance requirements. So, it has to, it can no longer be nonconforming. They would have to conform.
So, they have a year, though?
If you, right, if you have a nonconforming liquor store and they discontinue their license for more than a year, they have to then come into conformity.
Okay.
I guess that's okay.
And if somebody new came in, somebody new came in, they couldn't go into that building because obviously they didn't conform. If somebody wanted to move into that building, if somebody, another, some of the license already in town, they wanted to move into, they could because it wouldn't conform to the regulation.
Yeah, I mean, I think the way somebody could acquire, you know, if someone's acquiring the business, it's just a new owner. I think that's the way it works. Like, you know, if there's Al's Liquor Store and then owned by, you know, Fred Smith, I'm not sure how that...
The sale, the exchange of the license?
Exchange of the license. I don't know how that works, but I think...
I don't think you can exchange a license.
Well, you'd have to, they'd have to purchase it.
They have to get a new liquor license, the new owner.
Yeah, okay, I mean, I, but then that would have an impact. But that was always, that's always been in there. There's no really proposed change in that.
So, if somebody...
Because I don't know if you're, my question, are you getting a new permit? Are you, are you just, can you sell your permit?
I don't think you can sell a permit. I believe you have to, you have to apply for anyone under your...
I don't know how that, how that works.
Well, that's the way it works in a bar or restaurant, and I can't see would be any difference.
Well, the same thing, well, the bar or restaurant, that's a liquor permit.
Yeah, you have to go through the whole thing.
Do we really care if somebody wants to, you know, is...
Buy and stay there?
Buy and stay if, you know, you can let them move, and if he can't get a permit, well, that's his break.
I mean, I think it's, it's fine. I mean, if somebody did happen to, say you could buy it and stay at the same location, I mean...
Yeah, I think you can.
You grandfathered in. I don't know if you, you know, I mean, it's...
What you do is you buy all the inventory.
Whether you can or not, I don't think, whether you can or not, I don't think it has, is an effect because if somebody wants, if somebody's at that location, would different, I mean, I could see after the year, then you say, "Okay, you got to conform." But if somebody can purchase somebody else's liquor permit and stay there, then they can stay there.
You can't permit, you can't...
Well, no, I agree. I'm saying, I mean, if they could, I don't think it really has a factor on it.
All you're doing is buying inventory, and if the building is for sale, then the building's for sale. But that has nothing to do with this, I don't believe.
I agree, that's what I'm saying.
I mean, he has to get a liquor permit, and if he can't get a liquor permit, well, that's his problem.
I guess my question is, you can't sell a grandfathered business.
You can sell the business, you can't sell the permit.
Right.
But if, let's say, I have a liquor store in an R40.
If you discontinue it from R40.
I can't sell...
If you're selling a business, you're not...
The house and the business for someone else to come in and run a grandfathered...
Correct. Because you don't have the liquor permit. Because the other person doesn't have a liquor permit.
The other person will have to get a liquor permit, and then they'd be rejected to be in an R40.
Yeah, and this sort of goes like with...
Well, we, well, whatever, be within the 500, you know, feet.
Right, I think that's what this applies to.
They couldn't go into somebody who's already grand, they wouldn't meet the regulation of moving into that business.
Well, we just had a little discussion here in terms of if someone's trying to sell a business tomorrow, and if they were nonconforming, I mean, this ties into sort of a nonconformity. Usually, if you abandon the nonconformity after a year, that's it. But you could sell that business tomorrow, and your sign-off on the liquor would be the fact that you were pre-existing nonconformity already. You're not changing it. So, you're sort of protected there.
Right. So, that piece is the same across all three options?
Except they added with valid existing permit.
Yeah, yep, which we asked for.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, that's, okay.
So, then the location of...
I personally think this, this location is so over, it's so old, you know? This was, in fact, when people go to church and they would walk, you know, walk to church. But what difference does it make? I don't think it makes any difference.
Well, just giving a little buffer, I mean, the 500 feet, what is it right now, 1,500 feet?
Five.
It's 500. There's no proposed change.
Yeah, the off-premise is still 1,500.
Yeah, but all this saying is that if it's a highway there, you can have 400.
Yeah, you know, I can't even find my...
That's on the next one, that's option two.
Because number two is the one that...
Yeah.
It's on option one, option two, and option three.
It's 500, 400.
It's on all the options.
No, it's not on, I don't think it's on the first one, is it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so it's on all three?
Yeah.
It's on all three.
All right.
All they're doing is changing the highway to 400, which is...
You know, I mean, if, I mean, again, Frank, you know, at least the regulation's been out there for a long time.
Yeah, I know.
But, I mean, they're not asking for us to change that, so...
No, I mean, it's fine.
Except for that little, that 400. And I think that was one of our suggestions as well.
Is that the 500 feet plus, reducing it to 400?
Yeah.
With the highway.
So, the concurrence is, to keep it or change it, add the 400?
No, it's already added on option two.
Option two, right, okay.
Or at least, it might be, no, it's on all of them.
It's on all of them, but it's new.
Right.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah.
It's new.
1,500 feet for off-premises.
Well, I mean, there, because the other application, and I brought this up, is that the 1,500 foot for off-premise, or, you know, off-premise businesses, there was nobody, nobody, I haven't heard a hardship from the people that own the businesses of why to change it. Actually, the one person that came who owned a liquor store said he's, he's okay with the regulation like it is. So, I don't...
So, wait a minute. So, you're saying that the off, the on-premise?
Off.
Oh, off-premise.
Off-premise.
It should be 1,500.
I mean, there was no, I didn't see any, there was, I mean, I personally didn't hear...
It should remain 1,500 feet. And as I said at the last meeting, you have to take in consideration the people that have been in this town for years and years, that have been good citizens. Why should we put hardship on them?
Yeah.
Now, the argument was, well, you could say that about any business, but any business isn't, isn't coming in for a new regulation.
Right, and if they, if they, if all the owners came to us and said, you know, "We want you to look at the regulations to maybe limit to 1,500," well, then we'll take a look at it, but it doesn't seem like there's a hardship worth making to change that part of it.
So, that should remain, that the liquor outlets shall not be located less than 1,500 feet.
I agree.
And that does not, that does, what it should not apply to is restaurants.
Right, so that's the next thing is...
Well, that takes care of it, off-premises.
Right.
Off-premises, but on-premises, there should be no required...
Well, yeah, number three is that way. There's no required separation distance for establishments where booze is sold at a retail for consumption on premises.
I don't see where there's any reason that you should limit a restaurant to have 1,500 feet.
Oh, you don't?
No.
No, there shouldn't be. So, it should be, if they're next to each other, so what? If I'm going to an Italian restaurant, I'm not going there because he serves liquor.
Right.
I'm going there because I want pizza.
Well, we gotta remember...
And I won't go to the French restaurant because he serves French restaurant. If he has liquor, he has liquor. If he doesn't, he doesn't.
And I think, I think like, and I, and I'm just going to throw this out here because I'm not sure, I think the 1,500 feet for off-premise, I mean, for on-premise is way too much.
Right.
But I'm not really sold on zero yet. And the only reason why is because restaurants, there's a, there's a limited number of restaurants in town right now, and probably a limited number of places where they go, except for, you know, some redevelopment stuff. But the other thing you've got to keep in mind is the bars. So, I'm not really sure, I mean, I'm not saying that bars are going to pop up all of a sudden, no.
And you really think that people go bar hopping?
Oh, no, no, I'm just saying that the opportunity to open more, more of those...
Well, then maybe we should separate the regulation. Restaurants with a food license versus just liquor license or something.
Yeah, but some of the bars do have food. But the only thing I was thinking of, and I don't want to get into, I mean, I agree, then we start kind of muddying the water and kind of, but maybe instead of 1,500 feet, should we consider something maybe like 500 feet or 750 feet? Is it worth considering some kind? I mean, I'm just going to throw it out there. I mean, I'm, again, I'm, 1,500, I definitely think it's too much. Zero, I just, I just want to throw that out there before we say, go from high to low.
I get what you're saying, but I'm thinking of downtown, if there is a downtown North Branford where there's two restaurants in the same parking lot. One has a, one can serve liquor and the other one can't.
All right, I'm sold. That's all I had to do with Ron. Sold. Okay, that's a good point. I mean, that's, you know, and there's, well, go ahead, Charlie.
I was just going to say, we, you know, you've got two restaurants already in Central Plaza.
Right.
A pizza joint and, and the Japanese Steakhouse. Because now does, I think, is bring your own bottle.
Because I think they're too close to somebody, right?
Right, they're too close to the Japanese restaurant.
Right.
I don't know if they ever applied for it.
I don't either.
I think anyone in that plaza would be within 1,500 feet.
Of...
No, we're talking about if we made it less.
Well, we made it zero, so you wouldn't be able to...
My thoughts is, make it zero.
Yeah, which is what bench, option three does.
Right.
Yeah, no required separation with a same, different. No required...
Again, I don't believe people go to a restaurant, or don't go to a restaurant because they don't serve liquor.
Yeah, I'm, I'm agreeing. I mean, Ron, and Fran, those points you made, I mean, I could see where, I mean, I mean, the one thing, there was an individual that said, you know, about social, you know, about people driving out, and I can understand that, but you know what? We can't control somebody's behavior, whether there's three restaurants or there's one restaurant. I mean, I can understand what he, I see where he was coming from. But, you know, the person going into the restaurant and getting into the car and stuff like that, has got to be responsible, whether there's one restaurant there or there's three...
And there's laws that prohibit that, you know?
Yeah.
So, I mean, you can't control that. And, I mean, it was just a, I think, a very stupid...
Okay. So, we leave that as same?
Well, it should be...
Option three.
Yeah, so that part of it, we like that one on option three.
So, no required separation distance for onsite?
Correct, yep. All right, and then, the next part was the...
I'm sorry, just to...
A building of 1,400.
Right, but you do want to have the 1,500 feet between offsite?
Yes.
Yes, yeah, we don't see there's a need to change that.
Okay.
And the state's taking care of it anyway.
Yeah, but you can't go by that because...
Of course, with the governor's new thing on making booze cross the glass, maybe change that.
The one thing, 54.4 point, 54.4.3, when we get into retail commercial center that contains a building of 14,000 gross square feet on the first floor or greater, and containing one or more tenants... one or more tenants, there's no limitation on the size of what that retail is, it's just saying it's 14,000 square feet. And I'm not sure if that's where we wanna leave that at. So that means a retail, there could be, there could be, say there's a complex with two stores in it, cause it says more than one, all right, must, one or more tenants, so you have 14,000 square feet, so you got, so you have two tenants, let's say, one tenant is taking up 1,000 square feet, or 2,000 square feet, let's say, 2,000, that means that the other, the retail space for the liquor outlet could be 12,000 square feet. So that's like a liquor warehouse, I mean, do we-
Wait a minute. The location shall not apply to a liquor outlet in a retail commercial center that contains a building with 1,400 square feet on the first floor or greater, and containing one or more tenants and has direct access to a state highway.
Right.
Um, I think that's, I think that's some, this little clause is somehow trying to get around the 1,500 square feet in a different way.
It does.
It does.
Right.
So, so there's two things I was gonna, the first one was limiting the size of any retail outlet, okay? So that was number one. And number two would be, maybe it doesn't have to be 1,500 feet, maybe, maybe it doesn't have, I'm sorry, maybe it doesn't have to be zero, cause that's what they're proposing. Maybe we say, okay, if it is in a, a-
14,000 square feet.
A complex that's a total of 14,000 square feet, maybe we can reduce that down from-
Does it have to be a church or something?
Uh, yeah. Maybe we can reduce that down.
Right.
But it's also the church, the school.
Right.
I mean, you have all those separations you have to talk about.
Right.
They're saying they don't apply, that's the proposal.
Nothing else applies.
Nothing applies, not the 500 square feet.
Nothing else applies.
Yeah, the 500-
That's what I'm saying, they, they shouldn't even allow this.
Right.
This shouldn't even be in there.
Correct.
Cause it's only a way to get around some of the other regulations.
Well, but also, I think, I think, we, you know, where it was coming from is that if you're in a complex, you know, whether the, the outlet, I mean, the store is 250 feet away or 600 feet, it's still in the same complex. It's, it's, so it doesn't really, doesn't really matter if it's in the same complex. And that's, I can understand that, so, so you have a, so you, let's just, let's, just for instance, let's use Norfolk Center, so you got the church there, right? Let's say it was a lot closer, but if, what's the difference if the liquor store was where the dry cleaner's on the other side of Giovanni's, or where the Chinese restaurant is on the opposite end? What, you know, it's in the same plaza, so why doesn't, you know, but if it was in the laundry area where the laundry was or the dance studio, it wouldn't be able to fit there because it's too close. But if you move down to the Chinese restaurant, it would, it meets the requirement, but it's all in the same part, same part of, of, of the plaza. So why, why not, when you have a plaza like that, why, let's just, let's, you know, why does it matter where it is?
Right. According to this, let's say there's, using Norfolk as an example, let's say there's that little liquor store there, right? The guy can convert the, the other plaza into an enormous warehouse liquor store.
Well, that's-
And get around all the regulations, cause it says-
Well, that's what I'm saying.
It gets around all the, the church regulation, the school regulation, and being in close proximity to another existing liquor store.
Right, so what I'm saying is that we should not, we should not allow, it should be the 1,500 feet.
Yes.
That should not change. And then as far as the 500 feet from the, the churches and stuff like that, I don't know if, I, I, I don't think it should be knocked down to zero, and again, if you guys-
I'm thinking, but he's asking, we've already decided that, that 500 and 400 if there's a state highway.
He's wiping it out here.
That's why, it shouldn't even be there.
Oh, no, that's what I'm saying, I mean, I, or do you, or instead of considering 500 feet, do you want, do you wanna consider anything?
I won't consider anything on this.
Take the whole paragraph out.
Okay.
That's all.
All right, that's, I mean, I'm, yeah.
54.4.3 no longer exists.
I mean, that shouldn't even be in there. There's too many ways to get around it.
Yeah.
I mean, because if you have, I don't even know what 1,400 square feet, gross square feet is, how big that is.
It's like, yeah, where Giovanni's, it's-
It's that whole, how about the other side?
The whole footprint, and so that's where-
But how about where the Dunkin' Donuts is?
No, because it's a separate building.
But that's not big enough, I don't think that's-
Right, right, no.
The only thing would be, would be like Central Plaza, maybe where Supreme Seafood is on that one.
Yeah, and yet you got-
That's not that big.
It's a metro business.
I think Big Y, right, doesn't that-
Big Y, Jane Lucy's.
So where the old grocery store used to be?
Central Plaza, yeah.
At Central Plaza?
IGA, yeah.
Yep.
And that gotta be 1,400 square feet, that plaza?
Oh, but it's all connected.
I don't know if it's all connected. I don't know if just the IGA one would be, but possibly where the pizza place is and the hair place.
I think we should just forget the whole, the whole thing.
Take the whole paragraph out.
I think there's just too many ways to get around it.
And then, what's the next thing, relocation?
Now, is this, the second, cause we had two applications.
Well, this is the first one, we didn't get to the second one yet.
That 1,500 feet was in that one.
Well, we were going to just make-
Well, you already addressed the 1,500 feet from, for the liquor outlet.
Yeah, but what's the relocation?
Saying if you relocate, it doesn't apply. That option, then, then basically, nothing applies, right? You can relocate anywhere, is what they're saying there.
Within a certain proximity, a certain radius of your prior location.
Yeah, but that's kinda-
That you may be relocated within 1,500 foot radius of the front door of the former location.
Wait, I gotta, can you, can you explain that one again? Can somebody explain what that means? Any liquor outlet with a valid existing permit may be relocated within a 1,500 foot radius of the front door of the former location of the liquor outlet? I don't understand, I'm not sure, I'm not-
All right, so, we'll use Norfolk Plaza as an example. So you have a liquor store that is located 500 feet from a church and 1,500 feet from another existing liquor outlet.
Right.
This would allow them to relocate within 1,500 feet of their exist, of their current location to a new location, but they could be within 500 feet of a church and within 1,500 feet of another, of an existing pack store.
So we should eliminate that whole thing too.
Because, so it wouldn't have to comply with-
Right.
The location or-
So that's just another way to get around the regulations.
Well, yeah, I'm just saying that's, if you move, if you gotta, if you, I mean, I can understand where, well, here, let me, I'm just gonna go, let me just take the opposite side for a second, I mean, I kinda, but, if they're in a location, they need to move for whatever reason, and I don't know whatever that reason is. They, what I'm getting at is, maybe not allow, maybe we can think about this one is because if we've, what kind of impact will have if they have to move for whatever reason, okay? So, and there's, there's a available building nearby, but maybe it doesn't quite meet the regulation, but also, do we want them to really move somewhere out, I mean, give them the opportunity to stay within the area a little bit? I mean, I just wanna throw it out there to you, I mean, that's just a thought.
I think that if they have to move, they have to follow the regulations. If it doesn't, if they, where they're relocating doesn't follow the basic regulations, then I'm not giving them a, too many answer, answer books.
But what happens sometimes, maybe these, maybe because of the limited locations we have, and I'm, I'm just gonna throw it out there, and this may or may not happen, but if you can't move, your renters know that because of the regulations, those can, can, you know, can jack up the rent, you have no choice because you can't do anything about it. So I'm just saying that maybe, just let's think about this, cause we can keep this open, but maybe saying that if you move to another location, within 1,500 feet, we'll reduce something. Maybe it's not the-
Then maybe they have to go for a variance.
That's the improvement hardship. I'm with you, I'm done, I'm good with that, yeah.
My scenario to be yours was if I wanted a pack store, let's say, and the prime location is right across the street from the church.
Right, so, within 1,500 feet, I got you.
I can go down here, rent a storefront for a day, never move in there, and it's within 1,500, and I can be in front of the church.
Yeah, I got you, no, good point. And Norfolk Center, that can happen, because there's a, A, there's that property where the Old Deli used to be, and B, there's the Old Bank, which has been turned over a couple times, so, no, I mean, that's, I mean, I agree, I agree on that. Do we have to put any, do we have to put anything in there about, no, no, we don't have to.
Now, before we go on, um- There's two different-
So Carrie, we're gonna take that one out.
Yeah, there's two different things here.
54.5 relocation?
Yeah.
Yeah, we're gonna take that out.
Delete that?
But, um-
Or not, not add it, I guess, cause it wasn't in there.
Yeah. So I'm trying to re-decide which, we have to deny one and change another, is that what we decided? Or we can just change the original?
I cried.
What I think would make sense is, I can draft up a motion, based on, based on what you've just said, I can draft up a motion for the first application, which is, has the more, the bulk of the proposed changes, which has-
That's the cone and app, app confura one.
So that, and that would include changing the definition for measurement, adding in that valid existing permit under the discontinuance, reducing the location distance to 400 feet, so long as it's across from, divided by a public, or a highway. And then, no required separation distance for onsite consumption.
Right.
And then, and that's it. Those are the only additions.
Yeah, and we're keeping the 1,500 feet.
Right, so if-
Right, so then, sorry.
No, go ahead.
So that, that would be the motion, and then, and then, you're right, for the, for the other application, it would be a deny.
Right, and we could, cause what we did is, and I'm gonna go, I mean, we're still talking on this application 1415-12, but on 1415-11, what the comments are, I mean, what the difference, the proposal I can chase will result in, the first one is deletion of the 1,500 foot rule for establishment that have onsite consumption. Deletion, wait a minute, I thought he wanted to keep that. Oh, no, he wanted to delete that. So we've already covered that, we says, you know, we've covered a couple situations or something.
And I think Carrie knows when she makes it up, which ones-
No, no, I'm just saying, I'm just looking at his, the other reg, the second regulation, just to compare it to what we've done so far. The measurement being made is straight line under section 54-2, we've, we've, I think the measurement and the other, the regulation we're talking about now is more defined.
And it will include that sentence, the measurement shall be a straight line measurement?
Yep, exactly, so we've included that. And then limited the size of a liquor outlet to a floor area of 3,000 gross square feet. Well, the 3,000 square feet, I mean, it was kinda arbitrary, and we've already addition, since we've already wiped out the 14,000 square foot one, I don't think that we should limit anything to 3,000.
I don't think so either, I mean, first of all, again, tell me what 3,000 square feet is, because it means nothing to me.
Exactly, so I don't think we should, that shouldn't be in there, I agree.
Yeah, and it's not a way to encourage business if you wanna limit them.
Right, I'm with you. So I think we've covered all three points on that. So I think what the next step would be, Carrie, is if we can, like you says, put the whole regulation together, if you can send that out to us, and then at the next meeting, what we're gonna do is, we're gonna rearrange the schedule, because the public hearing already started, so we'll put some of the smaller stuff-
This public hearing is closed.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I'm talking about the-
So it should be first on the agenda and get over with.
We're gonna do these two things, application 11 and 12, we'll put them at the front of the list of any other business we have.
Right.
So I think we've, I think we've pretty much covered both of those applications, including dash 11.
The other point is, we're gonna, I don't know if we were gonna vote on the public storage, or is that not?
Yeah.
The public storage.
You did, you voted.
I thought we took care of it last week off that.
You did.
We did?
That's okay.
It wasn't quite sure.
I was gonna make the same suggestion.
No, so that, that's, you voted on that, that becomes effective February 26th.
Okay. All right, so we-
And so, just, sorry, just an administrative thing, what I was going to do is have new zoning regulations printed for everyone after at least the storage and the alcohol changes are made, probably before any propane changes are made, just because I don't know about the timing of that, and I'd rather have you have new regs, cause I don't, when was the last time you had new regs?
How long, how long have I been on the commission program? Eight years?
Okay, so, I think, and then we can just replace the pages regarding propane. Okay.
Just to, aside, do we have a set of these regulations in the libraries?
There should be, but that's a good question, I can, I can check.
If not, we should, we'll wait and put new one in. But being that, we've been working off application, I'm gonna call it dash 12, the one with multiple options here.
It's five, sorry.
Am I five?
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry, dash five. Dash 11, which is the second one that came in, do we wanna, do we wanna deny that tonight? Cause we've already covered that, and then one of our reasons are, is that we've incorporated some, or should we wait, or what do you think?
Maybe, maybe we, and I can just draft the motion to-
I was gonna say, wouldn't it be better if we got the motion and denied it, and then passed it this way here, it's in print, we know exactly.
Okay.
And we're not in any jeopardy of-
I was gonna say, just, we've passed the first one, you could just say that that, that application has been moved.
Right, we still have to deny it.
Yeah.
Yeah, and, whatever.
Yep, all right, so we'll just do both of those next time.
Right, and we have, we have time as far as, we have until April 11th, but it's better just to draft a motion and then we can-
All right.
So those will be continued to the next?
Yep, both of those will be continued, dash five and dash 11 will be continued to the March 5th meeting. Other business, bomb release?
Uh, no, not ready.
Not ready?
Oh.
Okay.
It took a while.
What am I doing, I'm, I'm reading, jeez.
There you go.
Uh, other business, Mill Pond Tavern requesting a use variance from ZBA.
So Attorney Lambert has patiently waited this evening, and he has an application, which I believe is in your packet, he's requesting a use variance from ZBA, but per the zoning regulations, it also requires review by planning and zoning, so it's just for this evening to talk about that.
You're gonna put a restaurant back in? I hope so.
My name's John Lambert, I'm an attorney, I practice in North Haven, and in 34 years that I've lived in Connecticut, this is the first time I've been before your, your commission. And I know everyone that doesn't have a vote here, but, but none of you that do. I represent the Cedars at Mill Pond LLC, and I was gonna bring stuff with me, but I wasn't able to get back to my office from being up in Hartford on time, so I'll try to be brief and interesting, cause you've had a long night. You had regulations, zoning regulations, I think, since the 1950s. The area where the Mill Pond Restaurant used to be, Mill Pond Tavern, was originally zoned Water District, and in the late 1960s, the then-private New Haven Water Company apparently got permission to sell some land, and they sold this piece that was, I think, actually about 15 acres, but 90% of it is wetlands right next to the, the river. And, so it was, since it was zoned Water District, and it was bought by a man named Charles or Bud Thomas, who lived in the area of Wallingford nearby North Branford, he sought to, he hired Ed Lachlan, and sought to change the zone from Water District to something he could use it for, and the district that then existed that fit well was a planned business district, you don't have it anymore, but when this commission was, you're now a combined planning and zoning, but in those days, in the late 60s, there was still a but in those days, in the late 60s, there was still a separate zoning commission and a separate planning commission. He went to the planning commission and got their referral, went to the zoning commission and got this planned business district, who was approved several months later for the restaurant. I think what happened was referred to in your earlier lengthy hearing tonight, which is that TPA did your plan of development in 1970, and had already done the thing suggesting all of this should be residential, because Mr. Rice and I were never, we looked through every single map in the rolled up files there, and could never find a map where the planned business district was mapped onto your zoning map. But by the early 70s, we found marked up maps that showed it to have been the R40 district. So, that's the, the history of this. We've had it, it was a restaurant, and it then became, I think, the River Run or something like that for a while. And then the Zamri's, my clients purchased it, and they tried to run it as a restaurant, and then hit the buzzsaw of 2008. And they have always wanted to operate this as a restaurant, and it is rather, the reason we're going for a use variance is we really don't want to come back and try to get this rezoned. It's a strange and odd piece of property, most of it affected heavily by wetlands, and not really very suitable to residential uses, because to access the main part of it, you need to go across what used to be a covered bridge, and is now a, no longer covered, but vastly repaired and engineered bridge. And then it butts up against Chekerelli farmland that I think the development rights were, were sold or, or whatever, a long time ago. So it's this one piece of property, if you develop it as a house, you would end up having to acquire the headache of maintaining a bridge, and a substantial bridge. And I'll just give you a little bit more of the history. This was originally, the Mill Pond that was there was for a button factory. Then you, North Branford, or Northford became the greeting card capital of the world at one point. And then in the 1920s, and on your original zoning map, it was called the Brush Company Pond, or something like that, because there was some brush company that was there. When Mr. Thomas bought it, he was looking forward to having the Mill Pond. But if you ever, and I assume some of you went there, if you ever went there, it wasn't the Mill Pond that you were looking at. You were looking at the, the Scour Pond, because the Mill Pond broke like a week after he bought it.
The remnants of the dam.
Yeah, the dam, right. And the dam broke, and he tried to repair it, and the old DEP said, you can't repair a dam without our permission, and by the way, we don't want any dams on that river anymore. So what we always went to when we went to that tavern was not the, not actually the Mill Pond, but the Scour Pond that had been created over the years. In any event, that's my history. I don't believe there's from, I've been on this case trying to figure out all that history. Took me well over a year, because the records are so poor. But in all of my discussions with people, I've never heard of anyone who said there was ever a problem with it being a restaurant. And it's because it's, I believe it's well suited to being reused as a restaurant and renovated as one. We're asking the ZBA, and we're looking for your support, or your non-objection, or the concerns that you may want to forward over to me.
Well, one question I have is that when the Mill Pond, or River Run, whatever it was at the time, closed, and then the, I don't remember, Adult Daycare, whatever came in, or-
It was a rehab center.
Rehab or whatever. But what I want to do is just, I mean, what I want to understand is that, or at least it was my understanding, that there was a sale on all the restaurant equipment that was in there.
Some, there was, there was, had been vandalism, but it, there is equipment there, and it is, all of the fittings are there to be done. They realize, they have, I've spoken with Carrie, and with my client, they realize there are other hurdles they have to go through.
Right.
Including coming back here for the site plan approval when they get it. But let me just go over that for what it's worth. They came in and wanted to have a counseling center.
Yeah, yeah, that's what it was.
And it got wedged in under something called Adult Daycare. And what I have argued, two things. One, they never filed the permit. And as you probably well know, a special permit is not effective until it is recorded in the Lambert. It was never recorded, so they didn't actually accept that. But to me, it, it has never been used as an adult daycare center. I don't, you have to torture the English language to call a counseling place an adult daycare center.
I was just, I was just wondering what the status of the building was.
Yeah, you know, the building needs, the building needs work, but Mr. Zamri is, the, Mr. Zamri, who is the principal, is presently very successfully opening up, believe it or not, Cold Stone, is that what it's called?
Creamery.
Cold Stone Creameries, and I think Domino's pizzas throughout Nigeria. And as a booming business, you know, one a week or something. So the capital is there, and the investment is there.
So I actually, I went to the property because I was asked as a zoning enforcement officer, you know, could this be granted the pre-existing non-conforming certificate? And the, the structure, I have never seen it before, this is my first time there, but it hadn't, it still felt like a restaurant. I didn't see commercial sized kitchen or big dishwashers or anything.
It's downstairs. It used to be downstairs.
I, I went into the basement, and, you know, I, the kitchen itself is still there, and it could definitely be fitted out again, but it wasn't, I was expecting to see like a commercial kitchen, but I didn't see that. But that being said, I know that there wasn't there intent to abandon the use, you know, they wanted to continue it. My main issue from a zoning perspective was more that, more than a year, several years had passed since it had operated as a restaurant. And so they, they brought it more into conformity, you know, as opposed to staying in that restaurant realm. But from a planning side, I think that it would be great to see it as a restaurant. This is where I struggle with the zoning and the planning roles.
Salvaging a historic building. Yeah, I mean-
I also think that as far back as I can remember, it's been a restaurant.
Yeah.
And the fact that a, a high level restaurant would feed off of the vineyard that's going across the street, and vice versa.
Right.
So I think it'd be a win-win for-
I mean, you look at the property, and I agree, you look at the property, and it's, you know, it has the historic value. I mean, let's call it what it is. But, and you see, it's just sitting there. And, I mean, I agree, like, zoning regulations are important to file, but in a case like this, I mean-
That's why we have a ZBA.
Yeah, I mean, so.
I mean, let me just say this, they used to have fabulous food there.
I remember.
And one of, I think they were underfunded, so they couldn't really promote the restaurant, because it should have done well like it used to years ago.
Well, what, the, the plan, by the way, is to continue it as a restaurant, but more of a, like the Country House on Foxon, where you rent it for a wedding. I think the overhead on a highway that is not heavily traveled may make it difficult. But if you have the vineyard and whatnot, you could open it like on Friday, Saturday, Sunday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, and have a business, and also have events, the people cater, business events and whatnot. And, and I think- Well, I'm not the businessman. They need the, they need to know their model.
But as far as the recommendation, what does everybody think?
Absolutely recommend them to go.
Yeah, I mean, so.
If you have a motion to be filed favorably, or somehow-
A motion to recommend issuing a variance to allow them personal.
I move to recommend favorably on a variance for allow the Mill Pond Tavern property to be used again as a restaurant.
I'd second it.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed?
Told you I'd have the easiest one.
Thank you very much.
And good luck with your, I chaired, I chaired North Haven's ZBA 30 some years ago, and it has been that many years since I've heard the term "blevy." When propane, a propane facility wanted to come into Defco Park or something.
Oh, Fran, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, do we have anything else, Carrie?
That's all.
Do you have any information on the cease and desist that's been in progress?
Yes, so a quick update on 50th Feller Road, that is in progress. The cease and desist is still in place. They've appealed it. They were not able to get on the agenda for the next meeting, which is Monday, the 23rd, unfortunately, because of the trick with advertising and needing to advertise it two times before the meeting. So slated for the March 16th meeting. I still have yet to receive an application though, which is frustrating.
What about ZBA?
Yes, they actually, I've received a letter from them, but they need to fill out an application, so I'm trying to get them to do that.
What is the basis of appealing?
I mean, Carrie, truthfully, you shouldn't, you shouldn't have to keep after them.
I know.
It's their business, and if they don't want to comply, they can cease and desist for never eternity.
Right. Right. And, and so, in addition to the zoning cease and desist, Wetlands issued their own cease and desist. So there's a show cause hearing. So under Wetlands, they have to have a hearing 10 days, within 10 days of issuing it. So that show cause hearing will be next Wednesday.
Why, why do they have a cease and, a separate cease and desist?
They wanted to issue their own, so that they could have-
And what grounds?
Concern about, well, operating without a DEP stormwater permit. And then also concern about the material brought on site, possibly leaching material into the Wetlands. They did submit their DEP stormwater registration in, and it's been received. I haven't received a confirmation saying that it's been approved, but they did go that far. They're trying to get an engineer on board to do the testing. So slowly chipping away at it.
Is everybody, anybody not gonna be here on the 5th right now?
God willing.
Me?
Do you want me to adjourn?
I have no travel plans.
You're not gonna be here?
No.
You're going to Florida sometime.
Barbados.
Charlie, I already made it. You missed it.
Second it. All in favor?
Aye. Enjoy.